Good morning, February 4, 2025. It's a little bit after nine o'clock and you're at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for Pastor Andrew Sampson with the Mesto Church Brethren for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and to the great Father, who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray together. God of many names, we come together this day asking for your blessing on this Board of Supervisors meeting, the conversations and the decisions to be made. We pray that we may remember the ones who have come before and those who are to come after us before our opinions are spoken or resolutions are made. We pray that we may listen to one another, that the different voices be heard as well as those that may feel silenced. We pray that we may consider the needs of all people, especially those who may vote, believe, look, love, and speak differently than ourselves. We pray that we may be reminded of our part in our place in the created order and act, speak, and listen accordingly with humility and reverence. We ask these things. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. First up is Presentation, February 2025, as Black History Month in Stanislaus County, presenting Terry Johnson, the Economic Development, Labor, and Industry Committee Chair of the NAACP, Modesto Stanislaus Unit 1048.
Thank you very much. I'm honored and privileged to come in and receive this proclamation from the City Council. First of all, this is Black History Month. We know that Black History Month was created so we can celebrate the achievements of, you know, African-American people and the roles that they played and the contributions they've made, you know, in America. And that's something that everybody can, you know, learn from, you know, the different things, the inventions that they had in economics, you know, medicine, you know, business interests, and just to make improving on America. My committees for 2025, my NAACP and my committee, we have a new renewed, new and renewed dedication to help to improve local community, you know, local businesses, and we want to unite the governments and agencies. So it's going to be a lot better for bridging that interest and gap, the divide that's existing now. You know, we want to bring everything together, and my committee is going to be working very hard to achieve that. And I appreciate everything you all are offering to us.
Mr. Johnson, on behalf of the entire board, I want to, we want to celebrate and proclaim, it's already been proclaimed, we're here to make that statement, that we're proud and celebrate our Black History Month here in Stanislaus County 2025. Appreciate it. Do I have the whole board come down and take a picture? I was going to call you down, too. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Time now for public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dais, and so does fair for every speaker, keep comments to the five-minute time limit. First up is Brandon Kirkbride.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Kirkbride with the Stanislaus Sworn Deputies Association. I'm back again to give you an update on our vacancy rate. Currently, we are at 187. We're allotted 209. We have 22 vacancies. Of those vacancies, out of our main office, our swing shift, which is the first and second half of the week, so we have two vacancies. Our Community Resource Unit out of the main office has a vacancy. The City of Patterson has three vacancies, a CRD, a detective, and a traffic unit. City of Riverbank has a vacancy for a Community Resource Deputy. Our Special Investigations Unit and our Marijuana Enforcement Team both have vacancies. And our Threat Assessment has a vacancy. Court Services currently has two vacancies. I'm not sure if you're aware that they post overtime almost every week at the courthouse for people to go work there because they don't have enough bodies. We're about a month out of contract now. I know we've gone past the contract end dates before, but we've worked things out, but it's been a month now. So we're waiting. We need your help. We need to work this out before we end up going to impasse. One of the five people I mentioned that said they were leaving, one of them just got a conditional offer, so he'll be gone probably within maybe this week. We need to do something to stop people from leaving, and we need to do something to attract people to come work here. The new courthouse that's being built is going to need more bodies. If we're already 22 bodies down, where are we going to get the bodies for the new courthouse? We need to plan on that now and work towards that now. So again, we need your help. Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. Next up, it's no name but an older child of God.
Morning. Father in heaven, please give me the words I need to convey the story to bring our glory to you, if it be that I will, in Jesus' name, amen. Now, I'm supposed to remember the pandemic in 2020. A lot of people's lives changed. I lost my job in 2020, and my unemployment benefits got wrapped up in the COVID relief. So after about five months of no money from my employment benefits, I figured I needed to do something. I had an aunt who was my benefactor, more or less, too. If it wasn't for her, I don't know where I'd be right now after five months with no money or no unemployment benefits. Anyhow, sorry. I knew that was going to happen. All right. So I, after five months, I figured I need to get ahold of somebody. I called somebody I used to work with, and they said, maybe they knew somebody. Later in the week, I got a call from somebody that worked for the state, that met weekly with the unemployment office to get through all the problems they're having with the benefits and stuff. So I got my check next week. Now we're going to switch. So after, I don't know if you know Turlock Medical Clinic? I go back, all my medical history is at Turlock Medical Clinic, which got merged with Sutter Gould. So when I lost my job, I didn't, I wasn't smart, I got only Medicare A. I didn't get my B plan because I wasn't sure which B plan to get. Through time, every time I called, they go, you're doing the sign-up period, even though you don't have it, it's not a change, but during the sign-up period. First year, I didn't think about it too much. Then I had a financial situation where I thought I needed the money to do it. I gave the money to my aunt to hold. That was in 2023. She misplaced it, and then about December 15th, she found it, which is right after the sign-up period, and I just thought, oh, that's the way it works out. So in 2024, I called for the sign-up period, and they go, oh, no, the sign-up period, if you don't have B, is January, which means I could have had it last January. So now we've lost a year. So then after I get all my insurance and everything, I called Turlock Medical, I mean, sorry, Sutter Gould, which I've been going to for 65-plus years, to make an appointment, and they go, no, you're a new patient. I thought it was, they told me that before because I had a doctor pass away, and I had to ask another doctor for, that'd be my, that'd be his patient. I'm going to go back. I was running back in my family's 1949 Chevrolet, going down Gear Road, and I looked across east, and there was some people walking down the road. And I asked my mom, what are they doing? She goes, they're going to church. Oh. Didn't know 15 years later, I'd married someone in that church, approximately 15 years later. Come to find out, the doctors are members of that church. Just, you know, you have a special bond with your doctor, and then you find out your doctor is the same denomination, then you find out it's the same church as you, it's kind of a, you got a tight bond there, kind of. So I called to make an appointment, and they go, no. And the first thing they say is, no, that the reason you're a new patient is we don't take Medicare. What? After taking all my private, that was a, they were mistaken. Doctors are closed for Medicare, there's a certain amount they can have, so she was, she said it wrong. She freaked me out. You know, I was distraught for a while, figured I'd call my doctor and talk to him, maybe he could help me talk to somebody. Anyway, I finally talked to somebody, and they won't, they won't make me an appointment. They say, I'm a new patient, he's retiring, so you can't go to him. But that's not a me problem. I mean, when the merge happened, because I go way back, when the merge happened, people were grandfathered, people were protected from policies that other people might have. I didn't go to them and say, can I be your patient? I was a patient at Turlock Medical. They came to me and said, will you be our patient? As long as you don't hurt us, here we go. Now, 2024, 2025 are saying, you can't see your doctor. You can see this other person, you have no idea who he is, you can talk to him, but I want to talk to my doctor. So I, that's about it. They have a policy, oh. In 2020, when I lost my job, I saw a young man lose his life because of policy. Now, I can't do anything about that policy that affected him. Like, he died because of a policy at that time. Whether or not he would have lived it another week, or two days, or whatever, he would have lived longer because of that policy. Now I'm in a situation with a policy that they, sorry.
Just go ahead and finish your thought.
No. They have a policy, but they forgot about their Hippocratic oath, about first doing no harm. Because when I go in and ask for, can I see a doctor, they tell me no. To me, that's doing harm. Anyway, I'm waiting to hear back from them because I want to see my doctor, not some stranger. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you. Sir, if you want to follow up and just check in with the back table back there, maybe we have a service you could take advantage of. Next up is John Bowman.
Good morning. My name is John Bowman. I am a member of the Stanislaus sworn Deputy Sheriff's Association, and for the last 10 years, I have been a deputy sheriff here in Stanislaus. I've grown up in this county, and this is my home. First of all, I want to just recognize and say thank you to all of the dispatchers and representatives from SR911 I see here. You guys have been a really good team with us, and you guys have been supportive of us in our job, and we also want to see the same for you. That said, I want to share a personal experience that I had that was, for my family, very traumatic. And it relates to the upcoming topic that we're going to hear, a presentation from SR911 regarding call transfer times. So on June 30, 2024, I was working an overtime shift at the Woodward Reservoir, working graveyard, trying to make some extra money to cover bills. My wife was at home with my two daughters that are three and five years old. She was watching television while they were sleeping. At about 10:30 that night, I got a phone call from my wife, and she was absolutely frantic. While she was downstairs watching TV, someone had broken through our fence, came up to our back door where she was watching TV and was trying to get into my house. So she was busy getting the gun from the safe and went to hide in my kid's bedroom with them because she called 911. And the phone rang, and it rang, and it rang, and then it disconnected. And the only thing she knew to do was to call the only cops she knew who would come running. So she called me, and I answered, and immediately I knew something was wrong. So I had my personal phone to one ear, and I dialed dispatch, the law enforcement number on the other ear. And I put both phones to the ear, and I said, I need you to enter a call from my house right now. She asked me, hey, can you hold for your dispatch? She said, no, this is an emergency. I need you to enter a call for me right now. And she was very, very, I don't remember who it was, if you're here, thank you very much. Modesto police officers responded promptly, and they ended up finding him in a neighborhood nearby. And my wife was safe. A phone call, she did get a phone call from SR911 calling back while I was on the phone with her and the other dispatcher. But I will tell you, if my wife had called and she had to wait five seconds for a transfer, or six seconds, or even 10 seconds, I think she would have been okay with that. But since then, she does not know if she has to call 911 while I'm working. Is she going to get a prompt response, or is she going to have to call me? And if I'm not able to answer because I'm doing my job and I can't answer the phone, which often I can't, what is she going to do? She's going to go to the gun, she's going to go to my girl's bedroom, and she's going to wait to kill whoever comes in that door because she's got to protect her family. Again, this is no disrespect to you guys. You guys are awesome. You guys do a good job. But I do believe that there have been some failures with the JPA. Part of those failures has been an inability to retain dispatchers because of inadequate pay. There have been occasions in the past where I know that the county has wanted to give our dispatchers and our call takers raises because they need a raise. They are not, not well enough paid for what they do, and just like our job, there's somebody not far away who will pay you a whole lot more if you're willing to leave. And what is commonplace is that our dispatchers will get trained up, they'll get a couple years of experience, and then very often, they will, because they need to go somewhere else and leave a vacancy and have to train somebody new. I would also like to just talk about briefly Oracle. I'm one of the deputies who's been able to test the Oracle software that we've had. I was on the December 3 test run, and I've also been a part of some other testing. This is groundbreaking technology, and it's going to revolutionize and change the way that we're able to do our job in a more effective way, in ways that we have not understood. Our current system, the old version of Central Squared, is beyond outdated. It is convenient that we know it, or we're used to it, but it is beyond outdated. We have regular service outages because of technical difficulties where we have to go back to pen and paper and a map because our system just decides not to work. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you guys for what you do, but I do believe that there needs to be a change, and I believe that that can benefit all of us, even though it may be uncomfortable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. This item will be coming up later on in the agenda.
Yeah, I understand, but it's my first time. I figure I just fill out the card and send it.
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
It's the last card I have for public comment. Is there anyone out that would like to come up and speak? Sir, you've already come up and spoke.
My name's Mike Roy Baptista. That's, I forgot to say.
Come on up and state your name.
I knew I'd bring you something.
My name's Mike Roy Baptista. Thank you.
Mr. Baptista, if, did you check in at the back table? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hello. My name is Teresa Pratt. I am a dispatcher.
Teresa, is this going to be in regard to an agenda?
It doesn't have to do with the transfer. It has to do with the presentation that was presented last time.
Okay.
I've been a dispatcher with Stanislaus Regional 911 for eight years now, and prior to that, I was a dispatcher at ValiCom or AMR, whatever you want to call it. I'm here today because as somebody who is a part of SARA, so our union, as well as a member of this community, there were just some concerns that I have with moving to Series PD. So I've been doing this job. I had to call 911 one time, and it was a very, very hard, traumatic experience, not because of the dispatcher. The dispatcher was amazing. She stayed on the phone with me until help could get there, and that made me want to do this job. So going back to the presentation that was given at the last meeting, one of the things that was said was six to 12 months expectation if we were to decide to move to Series now. That was 12 months was the conservative timeline. To train a brand-new dispatcher from call taker to being cut loose on a radio position because they do have to be trained separately, you do have to be able to take phone calls regardless of whether you're dispatching or just on the phones, takes about 18 months average. That doesn't include the background investigation, so typically a background investigation will take three months if you're rushed through it, and it doesn't include applications and the hiring process. So with that being said, on behalf of our staffing, in October 2023, the Series dispatchers went to their city council meeting. They were requesting more money because they weren't making enough money to make ends meet. At that time, they had 11 allotted slots for dispatchers. They only had seven, and four of those seven dispatchers now work at SR911. They are still in a staffing crisis. They don't have adequate staff to support this endeavor, and with how long it takes to train a dispatcher, my main concern is that, one, they're not going to have people to answer the phone lines that they're now going to have to answer, and so delays in people answering the phone is going to be paramount, as well as they're not going to have people to be answering our officers on the other side of the radio. And one of the things that has continuously been brought up the past couple of meetings is that dispatchers sometimes have to work patched backup, so patched backup channel between Modesto PD and the Sheriff's Department. I pulled our stats from November, or sorry, December 1 to February 1. The backup channel has been patched eight full shifts, and then there was maybe six extra hours where either we had a call taker, or sorry, a part-timer who was coming in later, so we just patched the channels for an hour until they got there, or four hours until someone came in for overtime. But if that is what we're kind of basing this on, I don't believe staffing is going to be any better at Series PD. One of the other things that I know we were talking about last time, how this is going to affect public safety as well as our first responder safety. I have a couple of examples. So February 1, just this past weekend, I was working fire, which means I was also answering the phones. I received a call from a man in Waterford saying a man said he was going to shoot him and reached towards his waistband. He didn't know if he had a firearm, no firearm was seen. But while I was on the phone with him, it was an open line. It sounded like he was fighting with this guy, trying to detain him. Because I was on this phone line, and because we dispatched for the Sheriff's Department, and I'm waiting for a deputy response, I saw one of our battalion chiefs, who I didn't know at the time, had a high schooler riding along with him for some sort of school assignment, driving right into this fight where there could or could not be somebody with a firearm, where they're in an active, physical fight. I was able to key up on my radio, let the battalion chief know, hey, you're going right into this, just so you're aware. And with his updates over the radio, I was able to give whatever he was seeing to the deputies that were going on scene and keep him safe in that situation. Another thing, February 2, the SO went out with some, a parolee at large in the city limits of Modesto right next to a fire station. Without anything being said to me, the SO dispatcher sent me the call, so I was able to call our fire station, let them know what was going on, and without anything being said to the PD dispatcher because he was by himself, she was able to create a call for Modesto PD because he was requesting a light and sire in response because he was by himself chasing after this guy. So yes, transfer times is something we're going to go over, but all of this was done without any of the other dispatchers having to speak with each other. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Any other public comment?
Good morning, board. Matthew Orr here again, representing the Stanislaus Sworn Deputy Association. You know, we can beat a dead horse all day, like my union president mentioned before. I'm not even a board member, and I'm here talking for my people because I'm passionate about us retaining the young minds that we're hiring and enriching. I invest a lot of time training these individuals at our training center and as a field training officer, and the last thing I want to do is see the time that I've wasted, or I'm not going to say that I've wasted, the time that I've put into them for them to just turn around and leave. I was doing some research last night. Right now, the city of Lathrip is looking for a motorcycle officer and a police officer position. I could go with my training now as an accident reconstructionist, and the thousands of hours that I've put in that training for the last nine years that I've been a motorcycle officer, and I can go make $15 more an hour and increase my commute by only 15 minutes. Do the math there. That makes pretty, you know, money talks there. I'm here because I grew up in Stanislaus County, and I love Stanislaus County. I already mentioned I can go work for Terry's brother at San Winkin County and be a third generation, but I'm not. I'm here because this is where I want to be. So I hope you guys can figure that out and make an appropriate decision to retain people who are invested in this community. I'm tired of investing my training and my knowledge in these minds for them to start looking elsewhere. It's only going to burden the citizens of Stanislaus County further when we keep wasting money sending these people to training, because we pride ourselves in training. Our sheriff's office probably spends more money in training than any agency around here, and it's because we want to better our people, and we encourage them to boost morale by sending them to these trainings. We take that away, morale is going to go down, and they're going to look elsewhere. They're going to go make that extra $15 an hour, especially when my commute's only going to increase by 15 minutes. That's nothing. You'll see me later for some other topics. I think there's some misinformation on the previous statement of how long it takes to train a dispatcher, somebody who is a communications training officer. Three, four months should be sufficient for a training for a dispatcher on basic call-taking skills and working a radio. It's not rocket science, and I love my dispatchers, but it's not hard. What's hard is the overstress and being overburdened because people don't want to work there, and that comes down to management. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any others for public comment? Seeing none, I want to close public comments and move to the consent calendar. CEO Hayes.
Yeah, if I could, just a quick announcement. We're going to remove item A3 from today's agenda. We just need to bring it back after we do some additional work. So removing item A3 from the consent calendar. Thank you.
Before the board takes up action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve consent calendar.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. First up, public hearing. Public hearing to consider approval of the recommended capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2029, General Services Agency, Andy Johnson.
Good morning, Chairman Condon, CEO Hayes, County Council Boves, and the members of the Board of Supervisor, Andrew Johnson with the General Services Agency. Before we get started, I always like to thank the team that helped put this together, Teresa VanderVeen, Jason Roberts. We have a wonderful interdepartment team that reviews and scores and a great collaboration with our chief executive office. We are here to present year two of the new capital improvement plan. You guys go ahead. There we go. So we like to always start with what a CIP is and what a CIP is not. A CIP is a plan. It identifies projects for future consideration. It identifies when projects may start and when they may end. It includes a proposed method of financing and estimated costs that we know today, along with cost escalation that could occur in future years. with cost escalation that could occur in future years. More importantly, sometimes it's important to remind what a CIP is not. Nothing in these plans are official and become projects until they're approved by the Board of Supervisors through one of our programs. The length of the CIP, one major change from last year to this year is, the first year we decided we wanted to have a five-year plan, and we would do all the projects in those five years. And what we found out is that didn't really work as well as we'd hoped, so we moved it to a rolling plan. So departments each year can change their priorities. Sometimes they get grant funding. Sometimes things occur that they may want to stop a project or start a project, and so we allowed departments to adjust annually. Also important to note is that Public Works is a major part of this process, and they come in the second half. Public Works does all the linear things for the county, all the roads, all the bridges, and then GSA does all the vertical projects. A capital improvement definition is anything that's over $200,000 that will change, extend the life of the facility, or alter the use of the space. Before I turn over the team, I did want to note that the HSA project is still in this proposal. It is still considered a critical need. However, after much conversation with the Board of Supervisors and senior leadership, you'll notice that in the plan, it now says lease, purchase, construct. And just last week, the Board of Supervisors approved a project to lease five-year facilities for HSA in the community of Salida, and we anticipate as that goes on over time that that plan will change within the CIP. In addition, the construction project that was planned, we actually transferred the funding for that into a small tenant improvement at one of the sites, as well as we held the $20 million back in a general fund assignment for potential demolition. The Board also approved moving County Center 2 through the Surplus Land Act, which we can begin that process this week. So that'll be available to go out to see if there's any potential development. So we did want to note that. As you will see, it's still a critical need within the project. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Teresa VanderVeen and Jason Roberts, and then Dave Lehman will follow up for Public Works.
Good morning. So I'm going to go through the process of developing the CIP a little bit. We are continuously encouraging departments to do master strategic plans, to think five or 10 years ahead of what their facility and business needs are. Those projects are submitted into the CIP once a year. As Andy said, departments can come and tell us that they need projects withdrawn for certain reasons, or they have new projects because of grant funding or needs that they've identified. So that opened in February of last year. GSA then reviews and helps the departments develop the scope and estimates of those projects before they go to a CIP committee to evaluate their priority. The CIP committee is made up of multiple departments, are represented, one from each board priority area, to evaluate each of those projects and score them accordingly. Sorry, we go to the CEO, senior leadership gets a chance to review the CIP for policy, and then it goes to the planning commission. And on December 19th, the planning commission reviewed the capital improvement plan and found it consistent with the county's general plan, and today we're before you for the adoption of the CIP. The evaluation criteria that the CIP committee uses is critical needs is the highest scoring evaluation criteria, 30 points. Anything that is a health, safety, emergency, or law mandate gets the most points. Then we go to board strategy, the building community service investment that the board put in place to restore county facilities or enhance parks and libraries gets 22 points. The points are awarded for departments completing master plans and having that criteria that identifies their needs. External funding also gets points if departments have gone after grants or state or federal funding. And then finally, the budget and customer service impact of the project. This past year, we've completed several projects that have extended the life of certain facilities, especially at the Juvenile Justice Center, the Juvenile Hall, the administration building out there was completely re-roofed, and the eight HVAC units on top of that building were replaced. That extends that life. The roof has a 20-year warranty, so it extends the life of that facility for use. The Salida Library was also re-roofed and has a 20-year warranty on that building. Gallo Center was recoded. It wasn't in as bad a shape, but recoding that roof gives a 15-year life on that roof. We did a security project in the parking lot, the Juvenile Justice Center as well, making 134 stalls secure for staff parking that were previously unsecured, and repaving 100 visitor stalls and bringing in a compliant parking there. The Kiwanis Youth Camp was affected by fire, and the fire-damaged buildings were removed, as well as some other buildings out there that were unsafe to use. And the PSC parking was expanded as well for secure staff parking in that area. And we have multiple projects that are in the CIP booklet that are active right now, and so we can talk about those more if you would like. But I'm going to turn it over, Jason, to talk about the projects that are within the CIP this year, the annual update.
Thank you, Teresa. Good morning. I'm going to dive right into it, so the details of the 2025 and 2029 capital improvement plan. This plan represents a significant investment in Stanislaus County. It comprises of 140 projects, which do total $1.18 billion. These projects are divided into two main categories. Forty are the vertical projects, such as building constructions and renovations, and they are managed by the General Services Agency. 100 of these projects are for the horizontal projects, which include roads and bridges, and is overseen by Public Works Department. The information shown before you demonstrates how the capital improvement plan aligns with the Board's priorities. The chart shows the distribution of the projects across these priorities, further broken down by managing agencies for the General Services Agency and the Department of Public Works. A majority of the projects are enhancing community infrastructure, led by the Department of Public Works, and will be presented in today's presentation by the Director of Public Works, David Lehman. This slide dives into the 40 facility projects managed by the General Services Agency and by the priority they fall under. The Board's priority, with the largest piece of the chart, is supporting a healthy community. Much of the cost shown on this chart are of the Health Services Agency, and will be reduced once the project is finalized. The second large, and there are a couple, sorry, my apologies, there are a couple of behavioral health and recovery services projects in this priority as well. The second largest is supporting a strong and safe community, reflecting multiple projects by the Sheriff's Department, the Probation Department, and the Office of Emergency Services. The third largest priority is providing efficient public services, which includes multiple improvements in the community centers and buildings occupied by multiple tenants, which would include Community Services Facility or 801 11th Street, as an example. The next priorities promote lifelong learning and enhancing community infrastructure projects that aim to improve our parks and libraries. Lastly, developing a high-performing economy, which focuses on the agricultural businesses throughout our county. Here we see the general services projects categorized by lead department that they serve. The largest is the Health Services Agency, which will be greatly reduced as we develop the plan for providing the services for this department, as mentioned prior. The second largest is within the community centers and facilities that have multiple tenants and not led by one department. The next two largest are the probation department and the sheriff's office, which have several projects requested. For instance, both requesting vocational training centers and other projects that benefit rehabilitation services, enhance community safety, and provide critical jobs and training skills. The next largest department are the Parks Department and the library, which are in the process of spending down the building community service investment and grants that they have been awarded to enhance these existing facilities. Now, the funding sources. This slide outlines the diverse funding sources we'll explore for each of these projects. It is important to understand that the funding strategy for each of these projects is finalized by the lead department prior to any construction being performed. This involves seeking necessary approvals, whether they're through grant applications or presentations to the Public Facility Fees Committee for approval. All funding requests will ultimately require approval from this Board. The majority of funding sources for our projects, for our current projects, comes from the Department of Fund Balance and external funding, such as grants, building community service investment, and public facilities fees, which total 68% of the funds needed for these projects. About 2% of these funds are needed, that are needed, are projected to come from the general fund. Close to 8% of these funds needed are proposed to come from borrowing. A majority of this reflects previously approved funding strategy for the Health Services Department projects, which include internal borrowing from the Tobacco Endowment Fund as this project is finalized, and the projected borrowing amount will decrease significantly. Again, for the 19% of currently unfunded projects, the General Services Agency and project lead departments will continue to identify funding sources as the project is At this point, I'd like to introduce David Lehman, the Director of Public Works, who will provide an overview of the county's horizontal projects.
Good morning, Dave Lehman, Public Works Director. The Public Works CIP process has the components of the RTIP, which is the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, the FTI, the Federal Transportation Improvement Program, and the County CIP. The RTIP and the FTI are done by StanCOG. Next slide. And so the important part of the RTIP is, it's analysis of current transportation infrastructure and systems, identification of regional priorities and goals, development of strategies to enhance mobility and reduce congestion, and consideration of environmental and social impacts. Next page. So the FTI. The FTI is a federal transportation improvement program, and it's also prepared by StanCOG. And it is, the elements of the FTI are allocation of federal funding for transportation projects, implementation of national policies and regulations, coordination with state and local authorities, and this focuses on safety, efficiency, and sustainability. So it all comes together. All three things have to be working in alignment. The County CIP aligns both with the regional and federal transportation programs by translating their priorities into actionable projects. And here's our potential funding sources. 375 million of it is still we're out looking for, for funding. The biggest secured funding is our highway bridge program, which is federal, and that's really nice for us. It works really well. PFF would be the next biggest, then RMRA. ARPA's up there, too, and Mezrel is super important for us also. Next one. So let's talk about the big ones. North County Corridor, construct two and a half miles of freeway, expressway. Seventh Street Bridge, construct the four-lane replacement bridge. NCC's 180 million. Seventh Street Bridge is 95. Faith Home Road Bridge, we're working on plans and right-of-way, and that's going to be estimated around 10 million bucks. ARPA Projects, 58 and a half million. Crow's Landing Business Park, total of 43. Hills Ferry is under construction right now. This Board awarded the project a couple months ago, and we're off and running. And then Crabtree Bridge should bid out in '25, '26 construction. Timbil Road Bridge is out to bid right now, and Kilburn Road Bridge, it'll be out to bid later on this year in '25 and under construction in '26. And so that's Public Works and the CIP.
The recommendations that we have before you today are to conduct this public hearing and receive public comment and input, and we recommend the approval of the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2029. Do you have any questions for the staff?
Bring it back to the board. Any board member have questions?
Okay, we're on. So I always just like to have this discussion with the public that the CIP plans are very aspirational, right? We think we have a methodology that when you see big numbers, like just Public Works alone, we know to complete these is going to be very difficult. But really, this is just preparing everything so that if money, if we can go out and secure a $20 million grant, like we did in North County Corridor, or 132, or the bridge program, you know, the money's available, so we're continually applying for it. But you always see there's a shortfall, and Public Works specifically, there's a huge shortfall. And so people can't look at this list and say, look, they're going to accomplish these 40 projects in the next four years. Some of them we get accomplished, we prioritize, especially when things go south in a jail, something where we're mandated. But I love the process and the way we get to the projects. I think it's very fair, because if we ask everyone what needs to be improved, it's probably in the, it's billions of dollars, especially with all the square footage we have. So appreciate the time and effort.
Thank you, guys. I just want to thank you for the presentation, Jason, Teresa, Andy, and Dave, for doing this good work. And I really appreciate the opening there about HSA, the building. I know you guys did that for me. I appreciate that. And just the concern with that, as we've said before, is it's so hard for government to actually build these things, and the cost that encourages for us to build these buildings, and it's, and I appreciate the shift in looking to possibly lease from the private sector or purchase something from the private sector after they've incurred the cost and built this thing for probably much cheaper than we ever could. So anyway, just very much appreciate you looking at other ways to do these things and to save us money, save the taxpayer money. So good work. Everything Vito said, appreciate all you guys are doing, and this is our wish list, and we'll see what happens here. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right, I'm going to open public hearing. I don't see any written comments. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Anybody wishing to have public comment on this agenda?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Morrow, resident of Keys and Vice Chair of the Keys Municipal Advisory Council. We know our county has many, many needs, and unlike the federal government, we don't have infinite sources. We cannot print our own money. But we're grateful in Keys that one of the projects on the imperative list is the renovation of our Keys Community Center and Library. So it's an estimated $4 million project. In government speak, that's not quite a drop in the bucket, but it's a relatively small pocket. But we appreciate for you taking care of our little community and seeing that this project is on the wish list, and we hope it can get done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion.
Approve the recommended capital improvement plan for '25 through '29.
I have a first?
No, a second, Ed.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll ask unanimously. Discussion item 7.1, approval to recommend the relocation of Del Porto Canyon Road to Route Alternative 9, and direct Public Works staff to continue coordination of route relocation development with Del Porto Water District. Public Works, David Lehman.
Good morning again. Dave Lehman, Public Works Director. I'm the emcee this morning. I think the plan is, Mike, you running the PowerPoint? You want me to? Who wants to run the PowerPoint? I can do it. Any rate, we're going to be here to talk about Del Porto Canyon Reservoir, and we have with us today TY Lynn, Mike from TY Lynn, and Anthea Hansen from Del Porto Irrigation District, and we're glad they're here. They're Del Porto Water District, sorry. And water supply challenges present a unique opportunity for the program partners. The program partners are Del Porto Water District, San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors and Water Authority. The project partners rely on the CVP, the Central Valley Project. Historical CVP allocations are widely variable, and the district is subject to rescheduling period, and exchange contractors have no access to storage in period, and exchange contractors have no access to storage in the San Luis Reservoir. So why Del Puerto Canyon Reservoir? Provide locally owned and controlled south of Delta water storage. It's a great project. Here's a regional project location map. It's on Del Puerto Creek. That's what the inundation area will look like. It's just west of I-5. It will inundate part of the existing Del Puerto Canyon Road. And here's the average CVP allocations from 2010 to 2024, where only 39% of what should have been. And the average CVP allocations from 2010 to 2024 equate to 15 inches per acre. And the Del Puerto Canyon Reservoir provides multiple benefits, increased south of Delta storage, improved CVP reliability, water supply for agriculture and groundwater management, environmental wildlife refuges, and Del Puerto Creek, and for the regional economy, jobs, farm gate output, and flood risk reduction, which is real. All these west side creeks leave their channels, and they just, it's flood, you know, a foot deep, and this will be very nice for Patterson, their high school actually, is in the flood zone, future high school, north of Zacharias, is in the floodplain of Del Puerto Creek. Del Puerto Canyon Reservoir will provide local control and reliability, up to 82,000 acre feet of storage, 55,000 to 60,000 acre feet per year yield, and approximately 300 cubic feet per second of foot take capacity. It'll be 260-foot-high earth-filled dam with a connection to the DMC, Delta Mendota Canal. The reservoir facilities consist of a main dam, two saddle dams, a spillway inlet outlet works, conveyance pipeline, diversion outfall facility on the DMC, pumping plant, a pertinent of components, electrical facilities and substation, relocation of a portion of Del Puerto Canyon Road, which is why we're here today, and relocation of existing utilities. Prior to the construction of the reservoir, the relocation of a portion of Del Puerto Canyon Road is required. The new road is going to be upgraded to current state, county, and federal standards with substantial safety improvements for all users of the road. Just reading last night, actually, this, a part of Del Puerto Canyon Road is the old railway grade from the Patterson and Western Railroad that went up during World War I to haul manganese out of the hills for the war effort. Kind of interesting, I suppose, so most of the roadbed is now under our road. Benefits, preserves connectivity to I-5 while allowing for the construction and maintenance of the future reservoir. And roadway relocation, the path forward, the project partners seek to continue to build collaboration and partnership with San Luis County and incorporate the project into future plans. The project faces a funding gap. We're not trying to here to, to compete with existing San Luis County jurisdictional priorities, meaning the district, and the necessity of improved regional water storage is driving the reservoir project, which can only happen with the relocation of Del Puerto Canyon Road. And so the, the status of it, the design alternatives analysis was completed in June 2024. 10 alternatives were evaluated and reduced to four. The four final alternatives were evaluated with seven categories, maintainability, constructability, transportation, right-of-way land, environmental, cost, and community benefits. If I heard on the call the other day correctly, they not only have elderberries, but they actually have some velp up there. This is like the first time I've heard of actual valley elder longhorn beetles actually alive and living somewhere, so that's really good. So we're going to avoid those. Received letter of support from San Luis County Department of Public Works at the end of the alternatives analysis. Roadway relocation, provide for a safe and functional relocation of Del Puerto Canyon roadway. So we're going to have, if you've driven the road, you know the shoulders aren't very wide up there. The new road will be very nice. Environmentally sound alternative for SEQA and NEPA. Improve travel times and emergency response times. Improve safety for cyclists, recreational opportunities, and a low level of negative impact on the community up there and the residents. So here's, it's in the pink line there. Benefits when compared to the other alternatives. Neck decrease in greenhouse gas emissions due to decreased travel distance. Affects the smallest number of property owners. Provides for reduction in travel time for the community and a reduction in emergency response time to Del Puerto Canyon. Avoids increase in traffic on Diablo Grande Parkway, and the proximity to I-5 interchange improves constructability and access. And so this is a diagram of how it comes off of existing Del Puerto, and those little green lines are cut fill lines, meaning, you know, when you're on a hill, the slope goes up both ways. And so there's going to be quite a few walls out here, because you can't chase a toe of a slope down a hill forever. Here's the environmental issues. And the blue are, I forget. Orange is the elderberries, and the blue is a little tar plant that is protected. Here's what the west end will look like. The team has decided, most likely, we're going to have a, a bridge there as we come down back towards the, the new Del Puerto Canyon Road. It ties in, you can see it on the far right-hand bottom corner where the green ends, that's the existing Del Puerto Canyon Road. And so there's going to be some scenic overlook opportunities here. It's going to be a nice project when it's done. And here's a close-up of the bridge. And so roadway relocation, we're at 30% design plan specification cost estimate, implementation of specific cycling, recreation, educational opportunities, geotechnical evaluations to inform design improvements and to optimize the project footprint, coordination with Stan Luis County Department of Public Works to advance and refine the roadway design to ensure delivery of a safe, maintainable facility, and then final design of the roadway, relocation, and construction. So what we're asking the board is to approve Alternative 9, authorize Public Works to continue working with Del Puerto Canyon Irrigation District. And I think I forgot one. I didn't bring my little sheet, sorry. And staff is available for questions. Anthea, did you want to say anything? Perfect.
Chairman Condit, supervisors, CEO Hayes, Council Boz. It's great to be here to give you an update on the project. I had to chuckle. I have one project, and it's about $1.18 billion, so little coincidence there this morning. Just to give you a little background on the project and why we've been working so earnestly this last year on the road, as you know, we had two challenges to our SEQA document, and one of, we prevailed on all of the environmental issues in, in the documents, except for the local judge found that the district didn't properly work with the county to the extent he would have liked to identify the exact relocation of the road. We did appeal that ruling, and just last week, the appellate court found in the district's favor. But the good news is, in the meantime, we've spent the last 18 months working with your staff to go back to the drawing board and make sure that we were in lockstep with counties on, on this road realignment. We do want to build this offstream storage reservoir, and unfortunately, at the bottom of it will be a road that, that is operated and maintained by, by your team. So Dave presented the slides that, that, can we back them up? Can we back them up? Let's see. Like to see if there's, I like the, the pink one. So this is the proposed, preferred alternative that we spent many months vetting. I haven't walked it yet, but I am told that is, will be a beautiful corridor for a road. There is a ravine at the bottom that has growth and trees, and so during different times of the year, it will be very scenic, as is the current location of the road. We're not impacting any homeowners, and we're actually improving service times and travel times for the community that lives to the west of, on the west end of the county. I think that most of the residences start about milepost nine, and we will reconnect to the existing Del Puerto Canyon Road at about milepost five. These are give or take. So I, I don't have much else more to, to provide by way of update. This last year, in addition to the road, we have spent an immense amount of time doing our geotechnical explorations. We have concluded those, two years of geotech work. We've convened a technical review team of five experts in dam construction and utilities relocation, and we continue to hear that this is an ideal spot for an offstream storage reservoir, and we look forward to continuing to move the project forward. Again, I want to thank the county's team, Dave, and I especially want to thank Del Puerto Water District's partners at the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors Water Authority. We are two separate agencies that have partnered to build this reservoir. Collectively, we serve about 300,000 acres of west side farmland, primarily in Stanislas County, but we are multi-counties. Del Puerto serves all the way to the north in San Joaquin and Merced County in the south, and the exchange contractors serve all Stanislas, Merced, and some small portion, I believe, of Fresno County. So we desperately need west side storage. This would be the second west side storage reservoir in California, south of the Delta, second only to the larger San Luis reservoir. So we want to keep moving on this project and entertain any questions that you have of myself or my partner, Chris.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All good, Dave? All right, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Any questions for Dave?
No, no questions. Just, just thank you guys again, presentation, and such a great project this is. We should be doing these all the way down the, the valley up there in the hills. There should be a ton of these things. It just checks all the boxes that we talk about, you know? We talked about the reduced flooding that's going to happen. It does everything that Sigma wants to have happen, reduce pumping, capturing the surface water, and, and upgrade the road, you know, just, just everything we want. So why would we not want to do this?
Right.
And then, like I said, why would we not want to continue to build these all the way down the valley? It would solve all kinds of problems, but thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Much, much of the same sentiment, the no-brainer, right, to, to build storage. And you have a good team, you've assembled a good team there to do it. The one thing I'm going to tell you is that every time we, we do any type of Public Works projects, there's someone's going to say that we, they weren't notified at their house, you know, they currently have an easy way, so do as much as you can for outreach. That goes to you guys. I, I know how we typically do it, and we try really hard, but there's, someone always falls through the cracks, so keep that in mind.
The district has done, sorry, does really good public outreach. We held a meeting up the, the hill at Del, or Frank Rains, and they've been doing an excellent job of communicating with the neighborhood up there, so we thank them for that.
Thank you. I don't see any written comments, so I'm going to open up public comment. First card I have is Stephen Morrow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Boz, I echo the same sentiments about us needing more local storage of water, so this project is an excellent idea. The folks over in Alameda County, oh boy, this is like 30 years ago, had to relocate Vasco Road to accommodate a reservoir. Have we reached out to our colleagues over at Alameda County to see if they had any feedback on how their project went, knowing that any huge project can spring a leak, no pun intended, can spring a leak and come up with unexpected issues? So I just want to know if we do have any plans to reach out to our, to our friends at Alameda County to rely on their expertise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comment on this? I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ron McMurtry here. I just have a quick question for my elucidation. It's clear to me that this is principally for irrigation, including neighboring counties. I was wondering, are there any other stakeholders slash beneficiaries of this reservoir?
Thank you.
Everybody who lives downstream of Del Puerto Creek, this, in the winter, I would imagine they're going to draw this reservoir down, and there's not much irrigation need unless, unless they're trying to bank water. Any rate, even when a dam is full, it slows velocities down and reduces a flood, just because the water gets slowed down by the giant pool. So it will have a side benefit of flood control, not operated as a flood control dam, but it's like Don Pedro, certainly having that up the hill makes life better for everyone.
Thank you for the question. We do actually have another beneficiary that maybe got glossed over. Del Puerto Water District and the Exchange Contractors Water Authority have long time been very supportive of and in partnership with the federally designated wildlife refuges here in the San Joaquin Valley. They, they start just south of Patterson in the Crow's Landing Newman area and go down through Merced County. The wildlife refuge system will be a beneficiary of this reservoir. We have allotted some storage space for them, as well as a water supply reliability component. That is some of our public benefit. The storage space is especially important because the south of Delta CVPIA designated wildlife refuges suffer in the same way that our water district does. They are subject to shortages in allocations, inability to move supplies, although they have a higher priority in water supply. They do not enjoy any designated storage in San Luis Reservoir or any of the other groundwater storage projects that are currently enacted. So this does have other beneficiaries, and then, as Dave said, the downstream flood control benefits are ultimately very important. City of Patterson is just planned to develop a large section of ground, including building a future high school, and all of that is in the flood path of Del Puerto Creek, and this project would effectively remove that area from the FEMA floodplain maps. So it would actually help those residents to not have to get flood insurance, because we will take it, take it off the map.
Thank you.
Anthea, I just want to thank you guys for just, you know, Del Puerto Water District's, this little water district, just, you know, out there on the west side, just how innovative you guys have been over the years, and these things take forever. And not only this, this is a perfect example, but the North Valley Regional Water Recycle Project, the tertiary treated water that you guys are, are taking, being a part of that, all these things that you guys have done, just out of Del Puerto Water District, you guys have put, helped put together. So I just want to acknowledge that and appreciate all that you guys are doing out there on the west side.
Thank you. As another aside, probably one of the reasons that we really need to build this reservoir is that regional recycled water project is projected to double in size as the cities grow, the water supply increases, and I do not have a place to store that supply, so...
Right, now you guys, don't you guys use in the canal to, for the storage, really? Isn't that kind of...
We do, but there is no designated place for Del Puerto to protect supplies when they are available. So really, really need to, to think long-term about how we collect water when it's available in the good times, and then have it there to smooth out the rough years, so.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board for motion on this agendized item.
Motion to approve staff recommendations.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a first and a second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, discussion 7.2, acceptance of an update on emergency dispatch call processing in Stanislas County and Stanislas Regional 911. call processing in Stanislaus County and Stanislaus Regional 911 Computer Aided Dispatch System Project. Stanislaus Regional 911, Casey Young.
I'll make sure everybody can hear me. Good morning, Chairman Condit, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Council Boz. I'd like to start by introducing myself. I am Casey Young, the Executive Director of Stanislaus Regional 911. I have more than 17 years' experience in the 911 industry. I hold six different professional certifications and have served on several working groups at the national level, helping shape industry standards and guide technology. I currently serve on the Regional Task Force for 911 Next Generation Technology and I'm the co-founder and co-chair of the California Emergency Medical Dispatch Quality Assurance Group. I am the 911 County Coordinator for Stanislaus County and I am an executive board member of the California Chapter of the National Emergency Number Association. As such, I serve on the Long Range Planning Committee, which meets regularly to make decisions on 911 emergency communications in California. My colleague to my left is our newest addition to our team, Deputy Director Kevin Pagankop, who has more than 20 years' experience in emergency communications. Kevin is considered an industry expert in the standards, best practices, and emergency protocols. He has been published in several industry publications and serves on the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch Council of Quality Assurance Standards. We both have experience working in accredited centers of excellence and maintaining those accreditations. We are passionate about 911 and the life-saving services that 911 professionals provide. We are advocates in the industry and for our team and our agencies. We're here to serve, to improve, and to elevate the services Stanislaus Regional 911 provides to our communities. We're here today at the board's request to provide an update on emergency dispatch call processing and the computer-aided dispatch systems project. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share this information with you and we hope it is helpful and we will get started. Hopefully you can keep up with me. All right, so in our presentation today, we'll be reviewing public safety answering points. What is a public safety answering point? Call transfer process in the county, the customer experience, 911 national standards, some challenges with call transfers, the benefits of EMS consolidation, and a brief CAD update. So number one, what is a PSAP or a public safety answering point? Public safety answering points are communications dispatch centers are often called emergency communication centers. They receive the incoming 911 calls, determine the location of the emergency, and identify what type of assistance is needed, dispatch the appropriate resources, and in some situations can provide immediate assistance before help arrives on scene. PSAPs work together in an area to provide all the necessary services. Often this means transferring a caller to a different PSAP. This is due to the separation of disciplines and agencies. Disciplines are defined as law, fire, and EMS. Agencies would be the agencies for which dispatch services are provided in that emergency call center. SR911 handles law for the Sheriff's Office and Modesto Police Department. SR911 also dispatches for all fire agencies except for the city of Turlock. This means when a 911 call reaches SR911, we're able to complete call intake, triage, and dispatch for both law and fire resources without a transfer. In order to reach EMS or ambulance services, there is a transfer from SR911 to EMS services for medical triage and dispatch of an ambulance. With each transfer, it is important for the dispatcher to complete call intake, which includes, Kevin, thank you, asking the caller for their name, asking for and verifying the location of the emergency, where do we need to send help, obtaining a callback phone number in case the call is dropped or disconnected, and allowing the caller to explain what happened to identify what type of assistance is needed. When emergency calls are transferred, callers are often re-asked some of the same questions to include the name. This is done for best practice. We want to create a rapport with the caller. We also use this for reassurance. The location of the emergency, the callback phone number, and again, what happened. This duplicate questioning is necessary to verify information with the caller firsthand, but creates an inefficient and frustrating experience for the caller who needs help. National standards dictate that dispatchers shall verify all location information conveyed about the emergency in order to obtain the most accurate dispatchable location for emergency services. In other words, at each PSAP, the dispatcher is required to go through call intake and this verification process again. I apologize for this slide. The font is small and there's a lot of words. We did this to show that these are national standards. We wanted to show it in its entirety. This is not Casey saying we should do it this way. This is not SR911 saying this is how we want to do things. These are national standards put together through bodies that do research and regulatory bodies. Why would we not follow the standards? So the standard here dictates that when performing a transfer, the dispatcher shall also perform what we call a warm handoff with each transfer. A warm handoff means the dispatcher initiating the transfer will remain on the line to announce themselves, so who is transferring the call, provide the location, provide the callback number, the nature of the call, and any pertinent safety information. They will then confirm the caller has connected through before disconnecting the line. Though the intake information has been relayed by the initiating dispatcher to the receiving dispatcher, the receiving dispatcher is still required to verify all of this information with the caller, meaning the caller will then repeat this information at each transfer. The CalOES 911 Operations Manual points out that every effort should be made to minimize the number of 911 call transfers. Call transfers introduce an additional step and potential point of failure where a call may be disconnected. Additional and duplicate questioning adds time to the call. There have been cases where the additional or duplicate questioning leads callers to provide different or less information. If you think about it, when somebody asks you the same question over and over, you begin to change your answer. This means that vital information can be lost, which could change not only the outcome but the response of the call, how fast we respond to the call. And in addition to this, caller frustration occurs in the process, which lowers confidence in the 911 system. In our current practice at SR911 with the SO integrated, there is one transfer to reach EMS services. The call is received at SR911, intake is completed, and we will begin to dispatch law and fire resources as necessary. We then are transferring the caller to EMS, providing the warm handoff, and then EMS will complete medical triage, call, excuse me, they'll complete call intake, medical triage, and dispatch as necessary. The table below displays SR911 call processing time specifically for EMS calls that we transfer to EMS dispatch. The average answer through call intake is measuring from the time the SR911 dispatcher picks up the line and then completes call intake and hits the transfer button to get it to the next dispatch center. The transfer to AMR is measuring the time from the button press to transfer, initiate transfer, to the time they disconnect. So in that 34 seconds is when we are providing the warm handoff, ensuring the caller is connected and then disconnecting the line. This represents a total of 81 seconds on average for EMS transfers. Now, this is increased by 42% to our call processing time. This next slide represents the standard transfer practice if the SO or the Sheriff's Office withdraws from SR911. The standard transfer practice includes a rule of what we call hierarchy. So it would be law and then fire and then EMS. This is also built into our telephony system. When we receive a call, we have what's called tailed tails displayed on the screen showing in order the calls be transferred, law, then fire, then EMS. So the dispatcher knows where the call is coming from and who it should go to next based on the complaint and the discipline. So the standard, so again, this option, the way with the standard practice would be SR9, excuse me, the SO fields a call. If it is fire or EMS-related, that is one transfer to SR911 to get fire started and then a second transfer to get to EMS services. And keep in mind, in each transfer, we're repeating this call intake process. The next slide depicts Series PD's current approach to transferring. So I apologize, it gets a little convoluted. If the SO chooses to follow Series' current practice with transfers, if the incident is fire-related, it will require one transfer down to SR911. In order to get an EMS incident, which also requires fires a first responder, Series PD or the SO would transfer incidents direct to AMR and AMR would call back to SR911 to start a fire response. So in this scenario, essentially, or in both scenarios, option one, you have an ambulance following the fire department. Option two, you have the fire department now following the ambulance. But each require two transfers to get an EMS response going with fire. So if the Sheriff's Office withdraws, it will add, again, an additional transfer to reach fire, two transfers to reach EMS with fire as a first responder. The table displays the number of calls broken down by contract city and unincorporated areas that could be impacted by the move. It further specifies the number of fire-only and EMS responses totaling 22,097 calls. This is a 12-month average for 2024. So to show this in another way, column one on this table depicts SR911 current practice, offering no transfer for law and fire and one transfer to EMS. Option one, the standard practice requires one transfer to fire and an additional transfer to EMS. Option two, the series approach offers one transfer to fire and a transfer to EMS and a callback to SR911. Both option one and option two, two transfers to get EMS going with fire as a first responder. SR911 is exploring the option of EMS consolidation. If we can integrate EMS at SR911, we're essentially creating a one-stop shop for all emergencies, eliminating all call transfers, bringing it down to zero. So what types of calls are we talking about? EMS calls with fire as a first responder. These are our high-acuity, high-risk calls: cardiac arrest, a child arrest, choking, childbirth, a vehicle versus pedestrian. You can see the list before you, stabbing, shootings, difficulty breathing. Imagine holding your breath through the transfer process to get to medical services and receive instructions over the phone. So we would like to share some examples of call intake and the PSAP transfers. We're going to play some 911 calls. These calls have been edited to protect each caller's privacy. You will hear a series of beeps. And these calls may be difficult to listen to, so we'll pause here to provide an opportunity for anyone to step out should they not wish to listen to the calls.
Yeah, we have a little boy choking here at Benny. Benny's in Salida.
What is he at the stand?
Excuse me?
What is he at the stand?
It's 4324.
Uh-huh.
Salida Boulevard. Salida, come through.
Okay. And is your phone number?
Yeah, it's 209.
(phone rings)
Yeah, 22.
(phone rings)
I understand, ma'am. I'm not sure whether to disconnect it. It's for a child that's choking at the Benny's 4324 Salida Boulevard. The callback number is 209.
(phone rings)
And fire is going to be en route.
Thank you.
So this is a life-threatening emergency. Child's actively choking at a restaurant. The caller was disconnected during the transfer, preventing the dispatcher to be able to immediately provide instructions. What I would imagine would happen was the EMS dispatcher probably called them back and tried to give instructions over the phone. If EMS was consolidated into SR911, there would not be a need for this transfer to occur. The caller may not have hung up and the SR911 dispatcher could have provided life-saving instructions to the caller immediately. We'll move on to our next example.
Okay, let me get you over to the ambulance company. Hang on, okay?
The third person, come on.
I know, sir. I understand. Unfortunately, this is our protocol, okay?
So what you're hearing here is an example of some of the frustration that we hear on the daily with the call transfer process in the county. So the frustration of the caller, you're the third person, come on, having to go through this process. Also, the stress of the dispatcher. You can hear his tone of voice or his rate of speech is a little elevated and he's telling the person, unfortunately, this is our protocol. We're adding stress not only to our callers but to the dispatchers who are trying to shuffle them through the process as fast as possible so that they can reach medical triage and get the help that they need and get instructions over the phone. Now, there are possible efficiencies that we could add into the system. For instance, what we call a CAD-to-CAD link between communication centers. This provides for the electronic exchange of information between dispatch centers, meaning so if SR911 was fielding a call, we could enter it into the computer system and send that call electronically to EMS dispatch who would receive it on their end. However, this process still requires the transfer of the caller to the other PSAP so that they can still verify the call intake information, complete their triage, and provide instructions. So while there is an electronic sharing of information efficiency, the experience of the customer, the caller, remains the So again, some limitations with the CAD-to-CAD link. The caller still has to experience ring time. They still have to experience the duplicate questioning, name, location of the emergency, callback phone number, and what happened. On October 23rd, 2024, SR911 provided a 911 call processing report to the Consolidated Emergency Dispatch Agency Commission recommending EMS integration. EMS integration at SR911 will reduce the call processing time, expedite help being dispatched, and provide dispatchers the ability to intervene immediately with life-saving instructions over the phone. So again, this would eliminate call transfers and create a one-stop-shop, efficient, high-performing dispatch center to not only get help where it needs to go but provide instructions immediately to people over the phone before anyone arrives. And it looks something like this, everything in one. Call received, intake questioning, dispatcher resource for any emergency. And we're going to play one more call as a final example.
Emergency dispatch.
Yes, my husband's having a medical emergency. He's become unresponsive. He was gasping for air and then became unresponsive.
What is your address? Is that a house or an apartment?
A house.
Okay, your phone number?
Yes.
Okay, I'll transfer you over to the ambulance. Stay on the phone. It'll be okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
You want to call?
I understand county with a transfer. It's going to be a. For ALS, difficulty breathing, fire is in route. Telephoned, I have an ambulance company.
Okay. So this call's important because it is a perfect illustration of what we could do by bringing EMS into SR 911. Excuse me. The first thing the caller says at nine seconds in is the patient, her husband, is unresponsive and gasping for air. If we were trained at SR 911 or we had EMS and EMD consolidation, those two descriptions combined would alert the call taker, the dispatcher, that we are to start CPR instructions immediately. Now, the caller or the call taker still had to verify the location and the address. So in this call, from the time she picks up to the time we understand the problem and we understand the location and the callback number, it's 27 seconds. That would be the point of initiation of CPR instructions over the phone. Instead, the caller is transferred to another PSAP who is then going to repeat the intake process, complete triage, what happened before they get to CPR instructions. This is a benefit of consolidation. We get help faster to people over the phone. And continuing on with building efficiencies into the system. The CDAC approved the purchase of Central Square CAD on June 26, 2024. This is a proven product that supports law, fire and EMS, offers an RMS and a JMS solution and also supports protocols that would equip dispatchers with the necessary instructions to provide over the phone. On January 28th, 2025, SR 911 and our response agencies began configuration of the system with a deadline set to complete on February 19th. In April 25, we expect to begin operational assessment of CAD with validation and readiness testing to follow in July and an expected go-live September 15th, 2025. And the following are some impacts due to the uncertainty of the direction of the sheriff's office. The county did not enter into the necessary agreements with Central Square. Licensing discounts were lost due to the delay. There is a possibility of additional costs to configure the sheriff's office outside of the initial process, so not having met that February 19th deadline. Also, the SO county fire probation may be delayed implementing and the county will bear any additional costs. But before we conclude, I want to emphasize a critical point. Every transfer is a delay. If the sheriff's office departs, whether they adopt the standard transfer practice or continue with CERIEZ's current approach, an additional transfer will be introduced into the system. This not only creates another potential point of failure, but further fragments our 911 system. This issue is something I am deeply passionate about. And right now, we have a chance to strengthen our system, equipping our 911 first responders with the tools they need to act immediately and provide life-saving instructions. Consolidating EMS dispatch can save minutes and when seconds make the difference between life and death, every moment counts. Dispatchers are often called the first of the first responders because they are the first to arrive, not physically, but through the phone, guiding and assisting before anyone is on scene. Neither they nor the public should be burdened by unnecessary transfers that delay help when it is needed most. Our mission should be clear, to create a system that is as efficient and seamless as possible. When someone calls 911, they expect immediate help, not delays and not transfers. Just responders who are ready, always standing by for any emergency. And with that, staff recommends that the board accept the update on emergency dispatch call processing in Stanislaus County and the update on the Stanislaus Regional 911's CAD system project. At this time, staff are available for questions. I'm aware that the fire warden wishes to make comments related to this item and the conversation from last week's meeting.
Chairman Gondit, members of the board, CEO Hayes and County Council Bose. My name is Eric Klevmeyer. I serve as the Director of the Office of Emergency Services and the Fire Warden for Stanislaus County. Stanislaus Regional 911 dispatches fire agencies throughout the county to nearly 60,000 emergencies per year, most of which are EMS or have an EMS component. As illustrated by Director Young, each EMS call currently requires a minimum of one transfer, which leads to increased call handling times and may lead to caller confusion, frustration, miscommunication and drop calls. The county's fire agencies are aligned in our desire to remove any obstacles to delivering the fastest response possible to emergencies. This means eliminating, not adding, yet another call transfer to our dispatch system. As a matter of fact, I have yet to meet a fire chief who would support a deliberate increase to response times. At SR 911, the co-location of fire and law enforcement enables quick and clear communication between disciplines. Fire dispatchers are not only able to see notes that are entered by law enforcement dispatchers, but also to talk with each other across the dispatch floor. This level of communication is exponentially better than having to rely on notes from the computer and helps keep both law enforcement and fire personnel safer on scenes and to more quickly share pertinent information across disciplines. Most importantly, having fire and law enforcement dispatch housed in the same center eliminates the need for an additional call transfer. I can think of nobody in an emergency situation that would enjoy using the equivalent of a phone tree to get help. Speaking of efficiencies, we have the opportunity to bring additional benefit to our community by bringing EMS dispatch to SR 911. This will give dispatchers the ability to intervene immediately with life-saving instructions over the phone for CPR, choking, childbirth and beyond. In 2019, Senate Bill 438 was signed into law restricting how EMS dispatch is handled. Specifically, it prohibits local governments from outsourcing EMS dispatch to private companies. While Stanislaus County's pre-existing relationship with VREC was grandfathered in, we would be prevented from entering into the same dispatch relationship if we were to establish it today. As the Director of the Office of Emergency Services, I fully support the consolidation of dispatch services because of the benefits that it brings to our community. We have been distracted by arguments over software and I am thankful for the board's attention to call transfers and call processing time, which are what matters most in delivering emergency services effectively and efficiently to the people we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for questions.
I think I just want to talk about myself really quick, if that's okay. I probably called the 911 system probably at least a dozen or two dozen times over the years reporting things. And we had a fire at our Walneller one time and caught up. And this is pre where you could actually see the location on the phones, probably seven years ago, eight years ago. And I was so sure, I'm so calm and I think I'm calm under pressure and I've been through this and I've been riding out with deputies. I've been at the 911 center for many years, just seeing what information's necessary. So I call, they ask the questions, name, location. And so I tell my mother, go stand out by the road, wait for the fire. And this is a propane fire, by the way, so real bad implications if something happens. I go get our 500-gallon water tank that's always full. I get everyone to bring all the fire extinguishers there, which there's one in every truck, so there's maybe 20 fire extinguishers, the little ones, and we're all putting out the fire there. And the fire department doesn't show up after seven, 10 minutes. I can't even tell you. And my mom said, I see the fire trucks going down John Fox Road in the other direction. And I made the mistake of giving him the wrong location. And in all of my glory, I sent him to my house, which is on the same road as my parents' house. And so, and I consider myself to be, you know, a little more adept at this because I've been through so often. The second component is my dad, when he was towards his end of life, I'd called 911 a couple of times and fire, Houston Fire responded. And they beat the ambulance both times and no disrespect to the ambulance, but I believe it's because of the dispatch, fire being immediately dispatched when you dial 911. And they get there about the same time, but the fire department, and that's all for the cost of like $78 a year for the Houston Fire Department. I think that's all we pay in fees. So I see the benefit of the, what I believe is the benefit. Lastly, I have a profound respect for the dispatchers. I don't want you to ever think you're under attack. This has been emotional for some people and I would, maybe it isn't rocket science, but it's extremely important and I know that you have to. I've been in there with you and I couldn't do the job. Couldn't do the job of a deputy. I couldn't do the job and I can barely do the job as a county supervisor. So, but profound respect for you. Don't get down because of anything that's said about you.
Just one quick question and then I know we got a bunch of public comments here and then we'll talk some more afterwards. But just real quick, Casey, in connection with the 911 consolidation, 911 with EMS, where are we on that right now? As far as that process, how's that going?
Okay. So again, CDAC was very supportive of exploring a plan. So we're in the process of putting a plan and putting some numbers together. The next steps would be bringing that to CDAC for their approval to move forward.
And AMR is, because I guess we're talking about AMR, right? As far as the EMS response, are there a part of these conversations there? Where do they stand?
We need to bring them into the conversation.
Okay.
Right, but there are certain steps that we need to take behind the scenes first.
Okay. In a perfect world, I know this is a tough question for you. How quick, when do you think that would happen? If everything went great and all the agreements were worked out with everybody?
That's a tough question.
That's okay.
I'll tell you, the fastest I have ever done it was six months in another county.
When you say you've done it, you've done it before.
I do not recommend six months.
Okay, but you've done this before.
Yes.
Okay, and it took about six months with that?
Because we had to. So I would say six to 12 months or a year would be preferable.
Perfect, thanks, Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you guys so much for your presentation today. Just a few questions. So again, if you could go back to the slide, I think you guys had it up. But what is the transfer time for fire and AMR?
It was about 34 seconds on average.
And that's for both?
That's for all the calls that we transfer. So we measured in two parts, the time that we pick up to the time we're pressing the transfer button and then from the time we're pressing the transfer button to disconnecting, completing the warm handoff with AMR and disconnecting was an additional 34 seconds.
And who owns the software?
Who owns the software for the CAD or for EMD?
Yes, for the CAD.
Central Square.
And does the system, obviously it complies with the SIMS and the NIM standards?
Yes, the new system that we're implementing and our current system.
Okay. And where are the servers that hold the real data? Where are they residing?
At SR 911.
SR 911, okay. And on the CERIEZ aspect, now I have a letter from Tammy Johnson, who's the dispatch supervisor for the CERIEZ Police Department and she has a memorandum and she claims that there's only one transfer for the caller.
There is a transfer to SR 911 for fire and CERIEZ transfers once to AMR for EMS. But in order to start fire with EMS as a first responder, AMR has to call back to SR 911.
Now, she says in this memorandum that it's done simultaneously.
To my knowledge, it is not done simultaneously. Or they have the staffing to perform that function simultaneously.
Yeah, well, maybe that's something we could verify with Ms. Johnson because again, I do have this memorandum here and it does say that there's only one transfer per caller and again, that this is done simultaneously. And then she concludes that this process is the most time-efficient and creates the best experience for the caller. So I mean, I guess we'll continue that conversation and get clarification from Ms. Johnson and from CERIEZ Police Department.
Sure, and I would just like to argue that the most efficient process would be to have no transfer for the caller.
Yeah, but even your system has one, right?
Two-day system, yeah.
Thank you.
Casey, Kevin, thank you for the presentation. I just want to confirm, no matter the transfer, there's four or five questions that have to be answered over and over again. No matter the transfer.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll open up the public comment. First card I have is Sean Ehrenberg.
Chairman Gondit, Vice Chair Kesa, members of the board, CEO Hayes, Council Bose. My name's Sean Ehrenberg. I'm the President of Stanislaus Consolidated Firefighters Local 3399 and I'm here to speak regarding this specific issue as well as the issue that occurred at last council's board meeting. Just for some context, real quick for yourselves and the public, I'm the union president that represents the men and women of Stanislaus Consolidated Fire who served the citizens of Riverbank, Waterford, Houston, Hickman, excuse me, not Houston, Empire, Hickman and La Grange. We also have the unincorporated portions of the airport district as well as the Beard Industrial Track. Our district covers 215 square miles, serves approximately 50,000 people. Additionally, we serve an additional 20,000 to 30,000 people through our resource sharing agreements with the city of Modesto. But before I get any further, I want to be very clear. My comments today have zero, nothing, absolutely nothing at all to do with the specific selection of either platform. I am not taking a stance on either side. I think it's not my place. I don't have the knowledge or the expertise. What I'm here to talk about is the resulting efforts, or excuse me, the resulting position we're left in as we move forward once this transition begins to occur, if it occurs the way it's planned. Creating these two systems will likely add delays to our firefighters and the ability to quickly serve the public. The lack of additional details on calls that involve fire and SO for the calls that we run to often requires us to stage. We have to confirm the status of the incident and we also have to get cleared in by the sheriff's department or whoever the law enforcement agency is on the call. For example, suicide attempts, batteries, domestic assaults and so on, we read the call notes currently in the system because we have all of our information currently linked in our CAD. With having these systems separated, there are going to be gaps of information that are going to occur when we have two separate systems. Pertinent data, informations about suspects, all of those things, if separated, I guarantee you will affect our firefighter's ability to deliver service. Another part of these issues is when we're staging on these calls, we have to often wait for the process of being cleared in by the dispatcher. Currently, with the current system, we can see when an SO deputy references on the radio, hey, some fires clear in, and we go ahead and oftentimes, giving the dispatcher a break because they're often very busy, we will go ahead and proceed to deliver service to our customers immediately. With having separate systems, we won't know when those things are occurring until our dispatchers tell us directly. When we have calls that don't start off involving law, we often need to request them for an urgent firefighter safety, patient safety concern, or because they're the authority having jurisdiction with regards to possible referrals to outside help. This process will undoubtedly be hindered and slowed by the additional layers of these requests and phone calls. Conversely, what happens now, the same fire dispatcher instantly makes a duplicate call in the CAD system, immediately places the call on a queue and begins the process for getting a sheriff's deputy assigned to our call and helping us deliver service to our patients. Something that was just recently highlighted by the county fire warden. Pertinent safety information. We constantly get safety information in our systems. For example, specific addresses with known problems, specific people with histories. All of those pieces of information are often relayed directly through our CAD system with information that's in the call. Separating these two systems, I am certain, will likely lead to operational gaps in between our information systems. Again, if the sheriff does leave SR 911, the fallout for our district specifically will affect us in other ways. For one, costs. I am certain that when the dust settles and everything is finished, SR 911 will undoubtedly have to recalculate the costs and the cost-sharing aspects that are going to affect all of the agencies who remain in SR 911. agencies who remain in SR911. I am certain that those current costs will then be spread across all of the current remaining stakeholders that are going to be left over, directly affecting our agency's ability to deliver service, because it's going to take resources from our budget to help fund those costs. Radios. Fire and law currently share the same radio infrastructure. I am worried that this kind of split will somehow affect the radio infrastructure that we work on, and I am concerned that especially, as the sheriff's deputies in a previous presentation highlighted, our infrastructure is already fragile at best. And so I'm concerned that the separation of the two agencies would continue to exacerbate this. Communications. With large incidents, when they happen anywhere in the U.S., every after-action report constantly highlights the key takeaway, which is communications. Anytime there's a failure in communication, whether it be a large-scale fire, terrorist attack, floods, communications failures are always highlighted as the main problem that's existing throughout the incident. Staying in one building will help keep the largest single fire dispatch center and largest single law enforcement's dispatch center in one roof working together seamlessly. Before I close, again, I want to be very clear. My comments have nothing to do with the selection of either two platforms. It's not my place. I don't have the information. But I am concerned about the ramifications, what's left over for the fire agencies and all the other stakeholders that are left over when the separation occurs. And I hope the council, excuse me, the chairman and the rest of the board will take that and begin to somehow come up with plans to address those things prior to us making that split and not trying to fix it after the fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Next up is Justin Vosbein, if I'm pronouncing that right. If I didn't, I apologize.
I have that header writing, so. Let's see. Members of the board, CEO Hayes, Councilors Boz, good morning. My name is Justin Vosbein. I come to you not just as an emergency dispatcher for three with Stanislaus Regional 911, but also as an educated and experienced professional in the dispatch field. I hold a bachelor's degree in emergency services management, along with other certifications. My thoughts are my own and do not represent my agency. At first glance, this CAD and dispatch issue seems to be a battle of narrative versus reality, but upon closer examination, it is actually agency benefit versus public safety. During last week's board meeting, the term "public safety" was mentioned 10 times in various contexts. However, not once was it explained how Oracle or a different dispatch center would increase public safety with actual results. Reducing data entry while beneficial is not public safety. Maps, unit locations, unit commands, those are not exclusive to Oracle. They are standard features on most CAD systems. Most CADs perform similar functions with only slight variations. No CAD will ever be perfect or fully satisfy each user agency. Central Square is a solid product that includes complementary RMS and JMS products designed to communicate seamlessly and reduce data entry. Sorry, I'm a dispatcher. I like the behind-the-scenes, so I'm not a public speaker.
You're doing great.
Yes, different user agencies have different user needs, but communication is key, especially between our user agencies and us. Our leadership team regularly hosts user forums to facilitate discussions about issues or needs in a group setting. Before joining SR911, I was a senior public safety dispatcher for 10 years with the Series Police Department. I experienced a CAD RMS transition in 2016. As a CAD administrator and an agency leader, I knew that system inside and out. Unfortunately, it lacks the computing power necessary for our needs. The Series Police Department has struggled for years to attract and retain dispatchers. Yet Stanislaus Regional 911 is growing and retaining team members. Our director's passion for improving the agency and our community is infectious. There are many reasons why five full-time dispatchers, including myself, left Series PD to join Stanislaus Regional 911 in the past year. Forget money, forget CAD, forget RMS and JMS. How would you feel if you were in a serious car accident, called 911, and were told you had to be transferred? That is exactly what happens when we transfer calls to VREC. Each transfer adds over 30 seconds on average, precious time that could be saved if we were a one-stop shop. Transfer times are nowhere near the five seconds as claimed by the sheriff. Achieving a five-second transfer time would require infinite call takers standing by, ready for the next call. That is simply not reality. On behalf of our union, I invite all of you to sit with a call taker at SR911 to see the reality of a transfer. Supervisor Graywell noted last week that Oracle has four agencies compared to Central Square's 8,000. One of those four, Archuleta County, Colorado, publicly acknowledged their dispatch struggles. In an article from the Pagosa Sun, the dispatch board chair stated that Oracle has contributed to the critical situation because it is new to the industry and lacks an established footprint in dispatch. Supervisor Whitrow, you stated last week, or mentioned last week, that a search warrant was executed on Stanislaus Regional 911, and while I do not speak for my colleagues, that action was deeply demoralizing. The Sheriff's Department, for the Sheriff's Department to author a search warrant against its own dispatch center is appalling. Supervisor Kieza, last week you stated that in these JPA disagreements, there must be a better service level for the public. That is exactly what our team, our leadership, and our director are working towards, a better level of service for our community. Supervisors, I thank you. I have every confidence that you will make the right decision. I leave you with our county's values, ones that I know you are familiar with. We believe each person matters. We work every day to earn people's trust. We are good partners. We encourage innovation, and most importantly, we deliver results. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. It's the last public speaker card that I have for this agenda item. Anybody else would like to get up and speak?
Chairman Condit, members of the board. So, a couple of things that I want to address that were addressed in the presentation or were not addressed in the presentation. Going to the memo from Tammy Johnson that I feel is very important in representing exactly how the transfer happens at the city of Series. First off, when Series PD receives a 911 call, it's answered within two seconds. On average, one second. This comes from their ECAT's data. You have not received any ECAT's data from SR911 on how quickly they answer 911 calls or transfer calls. That is something that you need to get verified, because the NINA standard that she spoke of talks about in the 90 percentile that calls should be answered within 15 seconds, 95 percentile, they should be answered in 20 seconds. This is a concern, as I received a text over the weekend that a transfer call took a minute and 15 seconds to be answered by SR911. So the moment the dispatcher answers the call, their CAD system automatically creates a call screen that copies over the ANI-ALI, which is the automated numbering information and automated location information, from the phone system, which is very important to the call screen in the CAD system. That information consists of the caller's location based on the phone class of service the caller is calling from, i.e. a landline or the type of cell class, the caller's phone number, class of service, responding agencies within that location, AMR, CPD, fire, latitude and longitude, the cell tower if applicable, location percentage, and meters if calling from a cellphone. All this is accomplished down to a tenth of a second from when the 911 call is answered. Once the dispatcher confirms the location of the emergency, determines the nature of the medical need through questioning, and if it requires a response from fire, the dispatcher transfers the caller to AMR. Once AMR answers the phone, the Series dispatcher will state "Series with a transfer," provide the location of the emergency, and advise if Series will be notifying fire to respond or not, and then Series disconnects. The 911 caller remains on the line with AMR to start the EMD process. This entire process, from the time the original 911 call is answered to when Series disconnects with AMR, takes an average of 83.39 seconds. All this provided in their ECAT's data, which was verified. During the time the dispatcher has simultaneously entered a call into the CAD system with all of the above information, there's only one transfer of the caller. If it is determined that fire response is needed, Series Dispatch will immediately call SR911 to dispatch fire, again, taking a minute and 15 seconds over the weekend. Once SR911 answers the phone, Series Dispatch will state "This is Series with a medical aid." Wait for the SR911 dispatcher to respond and provide the location and details needed for fire. When Series is staffed with two dispatchers, and the dispatcher who did not answer the 911 call is not busy, this will in most cases call SR911 to provide fire with the medical aid information all simultaneously, while the other dispatcher is transferring the caller to AMR. This process is the most efficient and creates the best experience for the caller. Again, we talk about NINA regulations that were referenced in the presentation, but what is the data from SR911? Because all of this increases call transfer time. It also increases the amount of time that it takes for the caller, which then affects dispatch times for not only officers, law, and EMS. Where's the data? You haven't seen it? We haven't seen it. As far as dispatch times, because simultaneously, a law enforcement officer or a fire personnel or EMS is being dispatched while the call is occurring. A number of times, let's talk about the patch. There was data that was provided. I specifically asked Casey, last meeting that we were here, if we were patched. She told me we were not. I have an SMDT message and a picture of it, that we were patched while the meeting was going on. This concerns me that the data that is being provided is not accurate, and the fact that we continue to be patched shows the short staffing levels and the issues that are going on that we have pointed out numerous times about the structure. They have a 46% vacancy rate for call takers. This is a problem. And again, it continues to be a problem and therefore leads to all the issues. So how are we going to bring EMS on board?
Thank you. Any others like to make public comment?
Chairman Condit, CEO Hayes, board members, counselor, thank you for letting me speak here today. There's one number that has not been spoken of today, and I think it's extremely important to speak about. Total number of calls for law enforcement last year was 81,676. So if that gives you any idea of the majority of the calls that are being dispatched, that is the number. When combined with the EMS total, 19,791, that adds to 101,467 calls. That's over 97% of how business is done that would not change with going to Series. The only thing that would change would be the 2.28% of the fire calls that are dispatched along with EMS or on their own. Another thing that I wanted to point out is that law enforcement is the only agency that proactively self-generates calls, enforcing traffic laws, county and municipal codes, and they look for possible criminal activity. When a stop is made, information is critical to have in a split second, immediately. Whatever information is available, we want that information. Approximately 45% of deadly force encounters transpire from self-initiated stops. Time is of the essence. The point I'm trying to make is based on the data and statistics. The benefit of the sheriff's plan far outweigh the topic of call transfer time that we are seeing with 2.28% being the only factor that changes, which would include all agencies, law, EMS, being dispatched as well. Officer safety and the safety of our citizens would drastically be enhanced with the benefits of Oracle. And I don't want to get too far into it. I believe that in the presentation last week, I went into some of the major benefits of Oracle, not just the mapping, but the master files that are created by a, having access by a dispatcher that has a law enforcement discipline and access to all of that information that can be given to the officer immediately, upon everything else that goes with it, that your body camera is your phone and a dictation device and tracks where you're at. So when you're dispatched to a call, your report begins immediately. Who you are, where you're going, what the call is, records everything that's being told to you, far cutting the time that a deputy has spent putting together a report, and also increases the accuracy of that report, giving us more time to be out on the streets. One of the major functions that really sold me, when I saw it, was having everything available on your phone. I could see a picture of a suspect on my phone. I could see a past history on my phone. If I jump out of my car and chase after somebody, that doesn't happen too often now in my career, but when it used to happen, and for the deputies that still get into those types of incidents, the dispatcher is immediately notified that this deputy is possibly in a foot pursuit. That was huge for me. That was huge for me. The wearable computer that is available for the deputy. Another thing that's concerning to me is that there have been no talks with EMS about consolidating. There's been no studies, there's been no talks, and what would happen if you bring in this large amount of EMS calls into an understaffed and overworked setting? Now you're creating more of a problem. These things need to be talked about, they need to be looked at, I believe, before they're included in a presentation. I was surprised to hear that there have been no discussion about this at all, but yet involved in the presentation. One of the major things that I heard from Turlock, from Turlock Police, is that they don't even have the ability on their CAD system to QL a plate. That means to query a license. That means if I see a car that I suspect in a crime or I may think that's stolen, I can't even enter that. I have to get on the radio, type up dispatch, and try to get information on this car. That just shows one of the inefficiencies of what we hear about Central Square. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Good morning, board members. Matthew Orr, is there something that I can present to you guys and give you guys to So I have some bullet points that I'm going to go over, but attached to that is a recent 911 call answering script that SR911 has established as of February 1st. And I ask you, why? Why now? What has changed? Why do we need to suddenly script what these dispatchers are doing? Do we not trust our dispatchers that are in there every day that have cleared communications training? She speaks about a national standard. That's great, but what works for us? What is working for us? It's not law. While I can appreciate her accolades and accomplishments, there's a lot of concerns that I see as a deputy sheriff on the street. You know, I understand what's the address of the emergency, but I think the number one thing is that address. Confirm it. Why do they need to confirm the phone number so early? It pops up on the screen, okay? Yes, I understand if it gets disconnected, but it's on the screen. It's there for them. Tell me exactly what happened. We don't have time for the soap opera. We need the Reader's Digest. It should be a brief what it is and decide what kind of discipline needs to go to, to initiate that transfer. We don't need the soap opera. As far as transfers go, SR911 lost the Newman Police Department a few years back. That changed nothing. Newman PD, when someone rings 911 in the city of Newman, those instantly go to the Series Police Department. They don't go to SR911. The same thing would happen for Riverbank, Houston, Waterford, and Patterson. So that would rule out SR911 for any of those emergencies. At that point, they could decide whether it's a fire call and needs to be transferred or EMS. Like Tammy Johnson mentioned in her memo, at that point, Series, in past practice when I was at Oakdale, it's not the same now because at the request of one of their prior employees, but you would start EMS for fire at SR911, and that's what I would do at Oakdale PD. And they've since changed their policy as a directive from SR911, creating a longer transfer time. They fail to mention things like rapid deploy, which tracks location or gives a general idea of where things are, text to 911, all gives a general idea of where people are calling from. I think ultimately, what we're looking at is I'm here today to speak up for those dispatchers that are afraid to speak up for the sheriff's office and afraid to stand in solidarity with us. There's multiple of them that have reached out to me and experienced what we are going through. They're afraid of retaliation from their management director. They've questioned her ability to dispatch fire units along with Stanislaus Consolidated or Modesto PD or the sheriff's office, stating that she herself has sat down in a room and gotten up and left because it was too overwhelming. I think... I think there's issues when the director, the person that is running an organization, can't even dispatch the radio she's directing. Those are all issues that I have as a deputy sheriff and somebody who's been a 911 dispatcher. It's concerning that the person making those decisions for a CAD and radio hasn't proven that she can even do the job for us. Thank you.
I'm Leonardo Oladie. I'm a dispatcher for SR911. I've been there for the last three years. Couple things first before I address what I need to address. Casey has been nothing but exemplary and an excellent leader. She has always listened to our opinions and our constructive criticisms and what we think is best for not only ourselves but our community. Also, for all the sheriff's office deputies, I appreciate every single one of you and the jobs you guys do. Nothing but admiration and wanting to get you guys home safe. That's all that comes from me. Some of the things that were asked about, or were brought up about the patch backup channel. Out of the last year, 2024, it was 732 shifts, 117 had a patch backup channel. That's 15.9%. I thought somebody, yeah, you guys wanted data on that? That's the data. When it comes to the cell phone ping that Series gets, and that being kind of a parameter that was mentioned as efficiency, sometimes you get cell phone pings that are 1,000 meters, which in the grand scope of things is about 20 city blocks. So somebody with chest pain down on the ground, 1,000 meters isn't going to cut it. So you try to rebid, you try to get a better location, and sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Secondly, another thing that was mentioned was why we have to confirm phone number? That sometimes if a cell phone signal isn't strong enough, we only get a 911 only phone. So if somebody calls, I have to try to find an alternate number. Give me your house phone number. Sometimes people have disconnected cell phones and they still dial 911. What's a good alternate phone number for me to get back to you? Because you're calling in that you're having chest pain alongside of a river, and you don't have a good ping, and I have to go send people searching for you. If you have a house, a family member that's up the river or whatever from you, and I get their phone number, guess who I'm calling? Guess who I'm trying to get more information from as to where you were last seen or going? The Oakdale PD transfer was brought up as well. The reason that was put in place by our previous admin, not Casey, was because there was an incorrect address for a working structure residential fire. So we sent our fire department to Modesto when they should have gone to Oakdale. And that's why it is so important for less transfers, get the correct cross street, the correct location, and get the right help to the right people and not have a house burned down. There was some misconceptions as well about the efficiencies of Series. When we get a 911 call and it's a medical aid, and you're having a hard time breathing, or your wife's gone into labor and her waters burst, and you can't drive to the hospital, we could send the fire department before we even transfer the line. And that's as efficient as it gets. Yeah, it'd be more efficient if we had EMS, but that's not the case right now. But that's how much more efficient it is with us being able to send fire department in-house and not having to wait for a callback. And apparently, there was a wait time, and that is unfortunate things that happen, and it's not efficient. So why add another layer of transfer time? I also wanted to touch on the point of, I heard of something about training time. In our current dispatch setting, it takes about 90 days, and that is fast, that is lightning to train a call taker adequately. That is for any emergency and get them up to speed and to be able to take one after the other for 12 hours a day with a one-hour lunch. Dispatching at a minimum should be at least three months, five months, unless you have had prior experience. That puts you at at least eight months at the very least, and that means that before you are ready to go and be a dispatcher and call taker at the same time. I also heard that the SO was requesting funds for quality training to send them to more trainings, and that's something good. Training never stops. You don't just get cut loose and you're perfect. No one ever is. You keep learning and you keep adapting and you keep getting your experience up. And that's the same thing in dispatching. It's no different than any other job. And I also heard that it's not rocket science, rocket science, our job? And that's, yeah, that's right, because you get the benefit of time to calculate. And in our job, it's not that. You react and you take action. And whether it's someone being shot at, you're talking to a 10-year-old boy who's 15-year-old and 16-year-old brother took a knife from dad that was trying to stab mom, all you have to do is reaction. You don't have time to plan it. You just have to go. Thank you.
Leonardo, thank you. I just want to correct a statement that was said earlier. It was the JPA that selected the CAD and not this board.
My name is Wana Karosko. I have been a rocket scientist with SR911 for 17 years. There was a question about stats for ECATs for us from yesterday. So the most recent ECATs we have. We answered 492 911 calls, 422 non-emergency calls. We answered 92% of those calls within 10 seconds and 97% of those calls within 15 seconds. Another thing I want to mention is no one from my department has gone up here and talked anything bad about the sheriff or anybody involved in this. But for them to come up here and talk about Casey, Casey is who I want to be. She is incredible. I have been there long enough to have multiple directors that don't stay. We have directors that we don't even see. She is seen. She is on the floor. She is working for us. So I want to be Casey one day. So she is the epitome of rocket scientist, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others like to speak publicly on this agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Ron McMurtry again here. I'm not an expert in any of this stuff. My concern is that there's a lot of dispute over statistics and concerns over whatever. And so I'm going to bring the, mention the elephant in the room here, kind of my thing. It's clear, I think it's obvious, that under ideal circumstances, these services should be consolidated to save time. I've never had an emergency, but I've had nightmares about suffocation. So I mean, I know what panic is like and, you know, the need for service. That's ideal, but we also have to be practical. We're not there yet. How long is it going to take? You know, how many people have to get involved? And so, and then, so I just have a little list of things. It's like, okay, first of all, one thing is what about language issues? No one has explained how issues like Spanish-only speakers, particularly in this county, when they play a dispatch, that adds a monkey wrench. How is that handled? And then, in the meantime, if we're going to have different systems and we want to minimize the transfers, the CAD-to-CAD systems, I like that it's computerized, but it's unfortunate that the transferee has to still ask the same questions if it's on display. I don't know if this requires legislation or not, but the procedure should change that the person receiving the transfer can say some code, you know, 490 or some code that says I have the information, so they don't have to annoy and waste time asking the same questions. This is just a patch. The other problem with the consolidation, the problem, it has obvious benefits. The problem is complacency, a tendency for human beings to not want to make improvements because we're in control here, we've got it all done. So I know Supervisor Graywall in a previous meeting told me there's a committee that meets on Oakdale Road. I think they meet quarterly, I haven't seen when their next meeting is. I don't know if they're the ones that can hold SR911 to account if there's a concern by agencies or the public that can really hold them to account, hey, you need to make these changes, improve this equipment, and fix this procedure. So if there is going to be consolidation, we need to look ahead and make sure that that doesn't cause inefficiencies, you know, that, you know, they respond to public concerns that are legitimate and they are held to account. Yeah, concerns with procedures, concerns with equipment, and concerns, argument over what the statistics are, and let's get, you know, way we can get to the bottom of it. Okay. So that's it. I'm just, you know, there is, you know, this is the elephant in the room, and it'd be nice if we had some committee or something like that, or maybe that's in place that we can keep this thing from escalating that it's, where it's gone to, where we're postponing, postponing because there's still arguments. And that, I think Supervisor Withrow expressed that concern that this would ever come to pass if the sheriff has a dispute with the SR911 and that we couldn't have resolved it earlier. Maybe a little foresight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Good morning, Supervisors, Chairman, CEO, and County Counsel. My name is Brett Kleber, and I currently serve as a senior account executive with Central Square. Got 15 years of public safety experience, the bulk of that coming from 911 centers, myriad of certifications as well. I'm actually simply here just to offer, to answer questions if the county has any directly from to Central Square. I can act on behalf of the company for a myriad of questions if you guys would like to ask. So I'll be here if there's questions. We are allowed to interact directly throughout this process.
I'm going to ask you a question right off, because last week when we had a presentation, there was a lot of complaints about Central Square, and it was really around service level. And can you address that? Is there anything you can, any insight you can give us?
I can. In a public forum, we typically don't do that because we want to respect the privacy of our customers and the issues that they have. Some of the things that were displayed last week were inaccurate, and they were not clearly articulated. We have had challenges, any software company has, and we've done a myriad of steps to prove those efficiencies, both in our actual implementations, our support. Matter of fact, I spent last week, I spent a full day with over a dozen different agencies in Southern California that are utilizing the CAD Enterprise platform that SR911 is implementing, and they spoke to the fact that we have been, they've seen and felt the improvements in support and development and faster turnaround times in different aspects. So there are quite a few things here. In general terms, there are a lot. Are we perfect? No. Are we getting closer? We're getting better each day.
Can I ask you real quick, just with regard to JMS and RMS? Do you guys have modules for that? Or, so that's the question.
We do. We have a few different ones with agencies that are live on our systems all over the country, many, many in the state of California.
So many in California are using your RMS and JMS?
Many are using RMS. There's not as many on the JMS side, but there are some.
Okay. Thank you.
Heard a lot about technology and looking forward, thinking, what has Central Square been doing to keep up with technology?
Quite a few different things, even as recently as last week, is incorporating AI into the different aspects of our platform. We have dedicated development teams, a whole product team that's growing. We actually solicit feedback from our users as well, so that was part of the reason why last week I was in Southern California, visiting with agencies to get feedback about the direction, not just locally in terms of responding to Senate bills and different things that are done on the House or the local level, but as well as nationally. Here's the things we need to respond and be prepared for so that we're not just dictating it to our customers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Steve Morrow. I have one question about the integration of 911 with mobile phones, because when the mobile phone system was first set up, all 911 calls wound up going in California to the CHP, which would automatically generate a transfer once they figure out that the call is Stanislaus County or whatever county. Is that still the case? Or if you call 911 and you're in Stanislaus County, does it go straight to the 911 center? That's an important thing because of the, we've heard talk about call processing and transfer times, and if calling from this device automatically generates a transfer because it's got to go from CHP to the 911 center, that is going to be an issue because that is going to slow down service and create some frustrations. I cheat the system because I have the local number for the 911 center programmed into my phone on my shortcut, so when I call, I go straight to the 911 center. But I was just curious, is that, is CHP still involved in the process when you use a mobile phone? Thank you very much. Also, I'm very supportive and thankful for all of the 911 folks and all of our first responders, like Supervisor Kiesa. I have had to call 911. You get flustered, frustrated, tongue-tied, and those folks are always there to help out, and we appreciate them very much.
Thank you, Stephen. You want to touch on that, Casey?
Sure. When Wireless Phase 1 first came out, yes, all calls were directed to CHP. However, in the progression of technology, we now have Wireless Phase 2, which is based on caller location. So if you are in our jurisdiction, the call should come direct to us. If you're, say, traveling on the highway, which is CHP's jurisdiction, your call should be directed to them first. So it should go to the agency who has jurisdiction. Not all calls are going to CHP.
Thank you. Sheriff, any others? Go ahead, come on.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Sheriff Jeff Durxey. So a couple of things that I want to address on here, kind of going back to the agenda item piece, and Casey touched on it briefly, just this idea that probation and potentially county fire is held up by this process. There's nothing that holds them up. If they want to move forward to Central Square, that's between them and you guys as the board. Has nothing to do with me as the sheriff. And the cost aspect of it is negligible because in the grand scheme of things going with Oracle will be a far more significant savings to the county, so I don't think there's a whole lot of validity to that. We want to talk about this idea of call transfers and call times and so on, and I think what we've settled on here is we're really talking about the entirety of a call processing time, not just a call transfer time, because a call transfer time literally just takes a few seconds, but to transfer it with the caller and process that, yes, that does take, you know, significantly longer as we see here. But one of the main issues that was not addressed is the ring time at SR911 with a 46% vacancy rate amongst call takers. Yes, that is a lengthy thing, and for every, I think for every story that anybody involved in this wants to bring up, you can bring up the counter story, because I can give you those, just like Deputy Bowman spoke to earlier, where calls do not get answered. I remember about a year ago this time, the ECATs data was supporting or indicating that SR911 was fully out of compliance with call-answer times. But we don't want to talk about that. The other thing that we are not talking about here is response time. So while call transfer time, call processing time is certainly not an insignificant factor to this conversation, it is response time that is the major component of any critical incident. And I kind of spoke to the example last week of, you know, if a call comes in right now that there is a shooting at, you know, Oregon Park in the airport district, functionally, all that my deputy needs to know is that that occurred, and they immediately turn their cars and they start going to that call. We do not know the nature of the injury, how many suspects there are. All of that processes, that call processing time occurs while the deputies are already en route. And EMS, in a situation like that, EMS and fire should absolutely be notified, and they can immediately proceed to that location, even if they have to stage, while the call, the caller is still on the phone with a call taker. This conversation seems to center around kind of a premise that we wait for the entirety of the information to be made available to us before we respond. That is simply not factual. I would submit that the current call processing time, whether it's with SR911 or Series, does not significantly change our response time to show up and actually handle the critical incident. And while that is a very valid concern, CAD-to-CAD, which was kind of glossed over here, CAD-to-CAD can functionally eliminate that. CAD-to-CAD, with the correct protocols in place and the correct policies in place, could completely eliminate call transfers so that whatever PSAP answers the phone could go through all of the EMD questions as well, if necessary, put it into whatever CAD system they are on, and it is transferred electronically to whatever discipline or agency is going to respond to it. We know Oracle can do CAD-to-CAD. We are told Central Square can do CAD-to-CAD. So through technology... CAD to CAD. So through technology, we can really address all of this in a far more efficient manner. We're kind of, we've focused this conversation on what I would call the legacy 911 system. It's time that we use technology and move us into the future and that is exactly what Oracle does. And I just, I'm going to end with this idea that centralized multidisciplinary dispatch centers are very unusual. Last week I spoke to it. I didn't include it in the slide deck because quite frankly, it was long enough in terms of our presentation. But the vast majority of the counties, when I reach out to my fellow sheriffs, they are law enforcement only dispatch centers. The majority of those are operated by the sheriffs, right? And then calls are transferred. This particular conversation here is not unique to our, our county, right? This impacts everyone up and down. And I think what we have to concern ourselves with is if consolidated dispatch at the county level, if we think that that's better, the next iteration would be for the state of California to revoke that local control, consolidate it at the state level. You know, it follows then that maybe why don't we have just a nationwide one? And I will tell you that I would be adamantly opposed to any of that because we all respond to things in some different ways. Local control is absolutely critical. And to me, there, this is, I've said this to all of you before. This is one of the silliest arguments we've had because the, the change that we can make by separating ourselves from SR 911, going with the Oracle system is, I think, profound. You know, and everybody kind of wants to indicate that, oh, this is about public safety and the sheriff doesn't really care about that. It's law enforcement only. And I would like to point out that I am the only elected official in the county whose sole purpose is public safety. That's really the only thing that I am here for. And while I certainly appreciate the fact that you all share those concerns, I can assure you that all I am interested in is making the best system for our county to serve our residents. And so I think before the ladies beat me here, I'll wrap up with that unless there's any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other public comment on this agendized item?
Hi. Good morning, members of the board and COAs and County Member Boz. My name is Michael Ailer. I'm a Training Manager at SR 911. I've been with the department for nine years. Started there as a public safety dispatcher in 2016. I was promoted to Training Manager in 2022, about a week before Casey came on board. I'm studying for my master's degree in emergency management. I only have two classes to go, so the finish line's in sight. I'm also studying for my emergency number professional certification, which I was inspired to start because of our Director Young. During the course of the past two years, we've made more progress as a public safety agency than in my previous six or seven years or whatever the number is combined. Whether the number is one transfer or five transfers, it is clear to me that the goal should be zero transfers in order to increase efficiency and help public safety. I think almost every in this room serves public safety in some capacity and I think the goal is to make the public as safe as possible. And with that, I'll close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board for any last comments and/or motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Casey, would you be able to make the ECAT's data available to us? I know we heard some of the numbers here today, but if you can just give that to us so we have a full scope of everything, that would be much appreciated.
Yes, we can provide that.
Okay. And, and could you just clarify, why hasn't there been any conversations with EMS up to this point?
Because we haven't sent it through our approval process with CDAC to move forward with the plan yet. So if we haven't approached AMR.
Got it. Okay. And, you know, I, I do want to remain open minded and I, I would like to get out with SR 911 and kind of shadow you guys. So if you can please arrange that just so it would help with my, you know, making an educated decision. You know, full disclosure and transparency, I was on the CERES City Council. I have more familiarity with the CERES Dispatch Center. I was a part of the council when we did bring in Newman and that, that went wonderful and I believe it's still going great till this day. But I would like to come out to SR 911 and, and, you know, try to grasp everything you guys are doing. And I will do the same just as a refresher with CERES. But just, I guess with the conflicting information today and Ms. Johnson's memorandum, I'm going to just withhold my support today only because I do have conflicting information. I don't want to disparage or discredit anybody, but I, I just, the water's too murky, I guess, for me right now. And, and with this memorandum and, and kind of the conflicting info that I have received, I am going to withhold my support. But I'm going to continue being open minded. I'm going to continue educating myself. You guys live with this on a day-to-day basis. You guys are the experts on this. And so I just want to get out there and be assessful to the information so that I can make the best decision moving forward. So again, thank you, Casey.
Just a couple of quick, quick things. Thanks, everybody, for their input here today. And I know all this is, is just an update from 911. So I appreciate that. The memo that I know that Chance you have, I'd love, love to see that too, if we could all get ahold of that. And, and it'd be great if we could, I mean, the whole purpose is times are the essence, I think, of this whole thing at this point. And it'd be great if we could, if we could, if that memo could have got to, you know, if you could have got that and, and we could, then we could have got some answers to, you know. And now we got to wait and for it to come back to us. So, so anyway, so I appreciate that Chance has got that and we'll get that and we'll, and you'll get it and we'll try to get some, some responses to it. That's good. Just a couple of quick things. Again, I want to thank, Casey, thank you for what you're doing. And, and I know the staffing, the morale there is probably better than it's been in a long time. And so I, I want, I appreciate all that you're doing out there at 911. I know it's been a very hard time. I mean, you had a search warrant served on you. I mean, we had all kinds of, I mean, just, it's been a rough couple of years here, actually, as we try to get through this process. And so, so I appreciate what you're doing. And I know Jeff appreciates you too, because Jeff told me that one of the conditions that, that when we were trying, we're trying to keep this thing together was that you had to keep your job, that you had to be the director of it. And I know Jeff thought that at one point, that, that Casey was the one that he wanted to make sure was in charge of. That was one of the conditions. And so anyways, just want to point that out. You know, this whole thing is all about service, right, for the public and for our deputies, to have a, a system that's in place that provides a safety for our deputies and our public. And so that's all of our goal here. And that's what we're all trying to get to, no matter where we are on, on getting there. That's what it's all about. It, and it seems like that, that no matter what, we are better if we're all together. And I know, Jeff, you made some comments there about, you know, that why, why does it have to be consolidated? Most of these out there are by themselves. That doesn't mean that it's good. And we're not talking about a national 911 dispatch or even a statewide, just in our county. It seems like we're better off, the most efficient service, response times and cost are if we are consolidated as one. And that's the best thing. So that being said, then, then it really just comes down to the software, I guess. Because if, if we are the most efficient, and this, again, this is just a lot of time spent on trying to keep this thing together by myself and this board and, and a lot of others that were out there. It was about trying to keep this thing together. And if, and if that's the goal, is for us to stay together, the whole conversation has switched to be about Oracle and about the CAD system. It seems, our goal should be to keep this together. The software, pros and cons for all of them, back and forth, we can make arguments there. But it shouldn't be the software that leads this discussion. It should be, bottom line, we're going to stay together. That's the most efficient way. We're going to get the best service. We're going to, and it's going to be the most efficient way cost-wise, not that the software, and that's what this has turned into. It's all about software now. And so, and that just shouldn't be the driving force behind this. And I don't care if, if Oracle's the second coming in software, it'll never outweigh the benefits that, of a consolidated 911. And, and, and that's how, that's where this argument is right now. It's all about Oracle and as compared to, and so we're trying to make all these other points back and forth on both sides. But the bottom line is we need to continue to be a consolidated agency and, and the public will be best served for it. Our deputies will be best served for it. The software, software's come and go. I know up in San Diego County, there was Central Square. Now, but probably a year, a couple of years ago, they started with another one. It didn't work and they switched to Central Square. You can make those changes if it turns out the software doesn't work. And, and that's the argument I made all along with this is why don't we, let's, we got to, we're going to stay together. If Central Square, let's go with Central Square if that's what it's going to be. And if it doesn't work out, we can pivot. We can, but we can't pivot once we've separated and started off our own agency, started a separate 911 dispatch. I mean, these numbers here, I mean, we look at the response, I don't care what and how anybody wants to spend this, there is additional time involved if we separate our 911 agency away from our consolidated right now. This, this potential for EMS to be consolidated, it eliminates all our transfers, right? If EMS now is all of a sudden a part of, that doesn't happen if, if, if we go to CERES. If, there will, even, you know, unless CERES is going to consolidate with EMS, I guess. I don't see how that happens either. So again, just as, as I said last week, was it last week we were here doing this? This is really frustrating that we're in this spot and that we're over a software. The wheels are coming off our system here and it's just, it's, it's not right and we shouldn't let this happen. I'm curious where, I know, we're talking about the CERES is what this is all about. I know their chief apparently isn't going to be available here. So I don't know who we're working with now in CERES on this. Jeff, I'm sure you got somebody else to take over since the chief seems to have some issues going on there now in CERES. So anyway, I, last thing I want to say here is, you know, we, we need, we need better number. This is all about response times, which is the most critical part about this whole thing. That's perfect. But then we also talked about numbers. We had bad numbers last week. We're going to get new numbers. We need new numbers by, by February 25th, by this next meeting. There are a lot of decisions that need to be made. It's not fair to our partners with Modesto by holding up. They need to make decisions. If, if, if this isn't going to work, there's decisions they have to make. We can't wait till April, Jeff. I know I saw that somewhere, that April is when we're going to get those numbers. February 25th, from my, from my opinion, our next, which is our next board meeting, we need to come back here with numbers as to what this looks like cost-wise if, if we are to leave our current system and go and join up with CERES, I guess. So, so we can't wait till April for that. So, and I, and I don't know why we can't, all right. Yeah. This is, that's the song.
Who gets that ringtone?
Kenny Chesney, "This Too Shall Pass."
[laughter]
One of my favorite songs. So, it's funny. So anyway, I want, and the board has to make that decision, but I want numbers back here by our next meeting so we can finish this one way or the other. And so for what that's worth. Anyway, I appreciate everybody's comments. I appreciate everybody's opinion. We've all got different ways that we're looking at this. But, but we need to wind this up and move on. So anyway, that's my last statement that I think I'd love and see what the board says, that we do something by February 25th, we're back here with numbers so we can make some decisions.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So more to digest. There's a lot of information again, more to learn. What, what I find interesting is the old Mark Twain quote, facts are, facts are stubborn things, but statistics are pliable. And I think we've heard, you know, everyone can find a statistic. Jeff had mentioned that earlier. You can find something to, to counter everything else. Bottom line is the goal here is not to degrade a portion of our system. And, and so I have to do more of my own homework. But as I was on my morning walk this morning, clearing my head, I started thinking, because I always put, whenever something's coming before us, I try and put a hat on of, of everyone that's involved here, dispatcher, a sheriff, fire, an EMS, and just try and figure out how I would feel if I were in their shoes. And today I started thinking, a question is that how would it, how would our conversation go if all the calls were coming into the 911 system and then they were transferred over to CERES, the sheriff's department? You know, and they, they wouldn't be happy. It would be a different conversation because there's always, you know, when you start talking about a transfer, regardless of technology, technology is really good until the internet's down, until there, there's an issue. So we have to really think this through on, on call transfers and what's best in the end. Again, I, I think that there, you know, from, from the CAD system standpoint, the advantage of, of Oracle will be that police can be released quicker, I believe, off of their, it'll take them less time on a call. But the dispatch component probably doesn't change at all. And so do we degrade one portion of it? And that's something that I have to try and figure out using this information. I do want the information that Supervisor Condit had, had asked for. I think we need to look at some longitudinal because snapshots in time of statistics are, can always be skewed. But if we look at longitudinally for a year, it's very hard to, to skew that and, and not pick out individual incidents or something where something went wrong. We use that to make the system better. But if, if 99.9% of the calls were picked up in 15 seconds or whatever the number is, and one of them was a really bad outcome, that, you know, that, that's going to skew. That's the story everyone's going to tell on one side and then the other side's going to say the 99.9. So I think we just sit down, we get some more information. I would agree, we've got to do this sooner rather than later. I think that probation and fire have determined that they were going to stay with the Central Square and the 911. I, we should move forward for sure with them. And then I think to clarify something you had said, Mr. Chair, that the CAD system was purchased, was chosen from the Joint Powers 911, of which the members are you, Manny, and then from Modesto.
The mayor, the mayor's part of it and Nick.
Mayor Zwalar and Councilmember Bavaro. Okay. I just wanted to clarify because I know someone had said that Casey chose it.
Right. No, it was, it was chosen, chosen from the CDAC, if you want to make.
Yeah. Just a point of clarification. I think that, the, the selection of the CAD system was made just prior to us reforming the CDAC Commission. So I just want to point that out, that it had a different makeup. Its, its legislative body was a little bit different prior or when that decision was made. Afterwards, it's been reorganized as just mentioned.
That's right.
You were still there.
I was still there. I was still there.
Supervisor Graywall was not on the commission at that time. I want to point that out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm just going to go back to the agendized item, acceptance of the update of the emergency dispatch call processing. Thank you for all the information. I know we have a lot of information circling around here, but thank you, Casey, Kevin, for your presentation. Has a lot of information. Most of my questions were answered through your presentation. I do agree with Terry and Vito. I think this needs to be taken care of sooner than what we were expecting. And I, I hope to get information back for the next board meeting. I'd like to see that. But what concerns me is it seems like this has turned into another department getting kicked by another one, just because we have a difference or there may be a difference of opinion. And I'm not, I'm not liking how this is turning out. So we do need to get that information back so we can make a decision, make a clear determinance of which way we go. And in the end, create an effective, high-performing system. That's what we're all after. I, I don't think we should accept anything less. I know our constituents that we serve are not going, going to accept anything less. And they want the best system. And they want people showing up at their door after they make that 911 call. That's what it comes down to. They don't care what it says on the side of the door. It's just that somebody's there when they call 911 in the quickest time possible. And that becomes infirmant on us to remove those barriers that prohibits that. So I think, you know, again, thank you for all the information. We're, I'm going to take that and, and use it to make my decision when it comes down to the next meetings. And again, thank you. So I'll ask for a motion to accept the agendized item.
So moved.
I got a first.
I got.
I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
Nay.
All right. Three, one. All right, moving on. Correspondence. Acknowledged, received correspondence and refer the recommended. Acknowledge, receive correspondence, and refer the recommended on the agenda. Supervisor reports.
Just have a quick report. I did do a ride-along over the weekend with Patterson Police Services, so it was a great time, and appreciate the deputies for taking me out.
All right. Any others? Legalist, later fiscal management report.
Just one item to report. I think you'll recall that our last meeting, I had mentioned the memo that was distributed from the Office of Budget Management or Management and Budget at the federal level, and I think everybody has seen the news reports, but I just wanted to close that loop. That memo was rescinded, and the threats and concerns of some of our federally funded program services and opportunities seems to have changed very quickly. So I'll let you know if we hear anything else, but it was kind of a whipsaw effect of having that memo, freezing up some conversations, potential funding, and then having the memo rescinded. But I think that's been widely reported and everybody's seen in the news. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're going to adjourn, and we do have closed session, so I'll have counsel talk about closed session.
Yes, we have closed session today. We have conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Department Code, Section 5495, 6.9, subdivision D1. We have two cases to consider, the estate of Carson et al. versus County of Stanislaus et al., that's in the U.S. District Court, Eastern District, and the case number is And County of Stanislaus versus Anthony Rhoden et al., and that's in the Stanislaus County Superior Court, and the case number is CV24000127. Is that appropriate for public comment?
Any public comment about closed session? Seeing none? All right, we adjourned to closed session. Deputy Middleton, thank you for your overwatch.